We're going to call to order the March 2025 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. Mr. Goodwin, if we could please start with the roll call.
All right. Mr. Henninger.
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Here.
Mr. Harwell. Mr. Rospento.
Here.
Mr. Armstead. Mr. Broadhead. Ms. Andres.
Here.
Mr. Gulas.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here, thank you. Next item is approval of the February minutes. Mr. Goodwin circulated a couple of weeks ago. They look good to me.
Motion to approve?
Second that motion.
All in favor?
To make the motion, you second it.
Right.
Mr. Gulas.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, communications. Mr. Armstead's not here. My only communication is we have a full house tonight. We want to thank everybody for being here. And I know there are several people here with strong opinions about some of the cases here tonight. And we definitely want to hear from you. At the same time, we want to be respectful of people's time. We've got some inclement weather rolling in. So with that said, if we could try to avoid any sort of repetitious comments. Two or three people have commented on traffic. We've heard that. We've also gotten quite a few written emails from people letters, et cetera. So we have a pretty good understanding of at least some of the issues. I do understand, at least with respect to the first case, there's a PowerPoint or similar presentation. We understand that that might take a little bit longer than some of the other comments. But if you could try to limit your comments to two or three minutes, make your points, again, try to avoid being repetitive. Everyone would benefit from that. So with that said, we'll go on to our new business. And one other comment, and this is true with respect to all five of the cases tonight. We are recommending action or voting to make a recommendation to the city council. These are not the final determinations on any of these issues. The city council could vote completely differently than we do. So just bear that in mind as well as we go along. All right, so let's start out. First case is RZ 25-03-01. Relates to 8 Bonita Drive. The applicant is Jared Bussie with Architectural Cooperative. And Mr. Bussie, you know this, but write down your name and state your name and address for the record. And that's true, again, another comment before we move along. If you do come up to speak and I don't remind you, please state your name and address and write your name and address on the board on the dice. Thanks.
My name is Jared Bussie. I'm the architect on the project working for the Stancels. My address is 1604 28th Avenue South, Homewood. So first, I'd like to give a little, a brief intro to the project and the property owners. And then talk about why we think this rezoning is a really good idea for this specific property. And then explain why we're doing the things that we're doing from a design and layout standpoint. So first, I want to just give a quick introduction to the property owners. Dr. Keith and Laura Stancel are the owners of Alabama Pediatrics. They own 8 Bonita Drive. That's the subject of the rezoning. They are not real estate developers. They're not part of a large corporate conglomerate, real estate company, or medical practice. They are Homewood residents, small business owners that are really just looking to take the next step in their practice. To me, they're the perfect kind of residence that we want to develop Homewood properties. They have been residents since 2003. Their practice has been established since 1981. And has resided in Homewood since 1996. Keith has been the sole owner since 2000. So what we're looking at is a building that's about 30 years old. And as the building has aged and as the practice of medicine has changed, they need to construct a new building that meets their needs better. They've considered renovating their current building. It would require significant rework. It would require them to vacate, which would suspend all of their operations serving the community. And they don't own the building. And so what they're looking for is a solution where they can build a building that suits their needs. And they can sort of give themselves some security and ownership. And really with the adjacency of the property, it's a really good fit. In fact, when the property initially came up for sale, they didn't really have plans to relocate. But were interested in that property to preserve the integrity of that community. They live in Homewood, they live in Hollywood specifically. They're involved in the Garden Club, the Beautification Society, the Parks and Rec Board. So they have a real stake in what happens to that property. As time progressed, they realized that they had a need to make a change. And they looked at that property as having potential to serve their needs. And so they hired me. I'm also a Homewood resident. They hired a landscape architect who's really familiar with the guidelines. And so we set about on a short process to just explore what can be done on this property to meet all of their goals. Okay? As far as the rezoning for this property, we think it's kind of a perfect solution. If you looked at a zoning map, you'll see that where they are is C2. You'll see lots of colors along Highway 31. And we would just be extending, we would just be extending the red further north. This is not spot zoning. This is contiguous zoning to really create a nice buffer, if nothing else, between a major US highway and the residents. And that's really kind of how we see it. If you were to rezone the swath of 31 from fresh and renewed, you wouldn't put NPD right up against it. With the dangerous traffic with the noise, it's just not a very good property for residents. We understand that there's a perception of changing NPD to C2. But what we're trying to do is really create a friendly use and really look at what we're doing as a buffer. It's a gateway to the neighborhood, but it's also a buffer to shield traffic, noise, and to put something that's just community oriented. You know, a pediatric medical practice to me seems like the perfect kind of thing to situate between a busy street and a neighborhood. The office hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, it's not a restaurant that brings in a lot of after hours. It's not a gym that does the same thing and creates lots of pedestrian traffic and flows. It's just a really friendly use. And so I think for those reasons, it makes a whole lot of sense for this rezoning. As far as our approach to what we designed, if you want to go to the site plan, the, maybe go back one down, one more. Okay, that's great. Thank you. So the C2 zoning really favors the front of the property. There's no front setbacks. There's no side setbacks. And so that kind of works, I think, on a lot of levels. We're pushing the building all the way up against 31. So the adjacent neighbor isn't going to have a building right on top of them. This building becomes, again, a nice screen and buffer. There's just a simple double-loaded corridor parking lot. And then a generous landscape buffer. The zoning ordinance requires a parking landscape buffer of 15 feet. If you scroll another slide or two, keep going, there's a landscape plan. Go until you get to a, there you go. So we've hired a landscape architect. There's going to be a heavily, heavy natural buffer between the two. So from a code standpoint, we're in compliance. And from a site strategy, I think it does a good job of creating front edge along 31. It's going to be a nice continuation of the things along 31 while getting away from the neighbors in a way that, again, it's creating a nice buffer and a nice transition. And also, you know, parking is in the back in some ways. And so we're not fronting 31 with an ugly parking lot. But we're kind of focusing on the architecture to create that buffer or to create that edge. If you go back to some of the renderings, we wanted to really borrow from what's in Hollywood already. Using a Spanish Revival architectural style, so it blends with the neighborhood and feels like it belongs. But what it also does is it helps us keep the scale down. There's many houses in Hollywood taller than our building is going to be. Only a portion of it's two stories. But with parapet roofs and flat roofs, we're able to keep the height down. So we don't have these big, tall, soaring, sloped roofs. Really creating something that is sort of minimally impactful, but beautiful and scaled appropriately was a real priority for us. So we hope that's recognized. We understand taste is taste. But that was our goal, was to create something that blended. Lastly, I'll just make the note that we're complying with all the C2 setbacks, the height restrictions, the parking landscape buffers, parking requirements. There would be no variances required for what we've designed if the rezoning is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Bussie. If that's it for now, we'll have some questions for you later. But for now, we're going to open up the public portion of this hearing. And again, I understand there's kind of an initial presentation that we're going to see. And as I said earlier, if we could try to, after that, be brief and avoid repetitious comments, we appreciate it.
Good evening, members of the commission, chairman. Thank you also to the city staff who've been helpful in putting our comments together. My name is Josh Carpenter. I am the resident of 10 Bonita Drive, which physically abuts the property in front of you all today. I reside there with my wife Nicole and my two daughters, the oldest of whom is here tonight. She turned five yesterday. And so this is an opportunity to see city processes in action. We were really here to represent not just our own opinion of what should be done here. But also, we think the opinions of several other folks here in Hollywood. So I won't belabor many of these points because I know my neighbors have worked really hard, not just to, again, represent our opinion. But those of many others, including Debbie Brazil, Linda Templeton, and Stan Gilmore, many of whom have walked the neighborhoods to really solicit opinions. So I don't know who's working the slides, but I'll go to the next one. So as we started to think about this, it was really, tried to putting our, tried to put ourselves in your shoes. So if I were a member of the planning commission, what were the questions that I would be contemplating to really make what I consider to be a pretty big leap? And I think these are the four questions that are really going to guide, at least my portion of the conversation today, before I turn it over to our neighbors. So I'll go to the next slide. So the first question is, you know, really, why would the planning commission would be expected to vote against, you know, the wishes of 48 neighbors? And then why those 48 households chose to oppose this? And the first is really, you know, basic. It's going to increase traffic and congestion on an already congested street. And a street that was designed in 1925, which was the year my home was built, to be a residential street. It's already got one commercial building on it. By building this one, you will not remove that commercial building. You'll add another one, and in fact, a bigger one, which would increase traffic flow. And we have some slides that show that. Another important component of this is that this really does damage property values. I did interrogate that question. I'm an academic by training. And I looked up a couple of studies that focused on really the parameters for which property values are diminished when new zoning changes occur. Particularly new commercial zoning changes. And really, it's indicated by, according to these studies, the amount of new traffic that is imagined. And in this case, increased patient flow is something that will ultimately lead to more traffic. And you can see that on the next slide. So this is a map of residents in the affected area who have signed on to a letter that I believe was delivered to the commission that demonstrate who all is against this. And I think you'll note that right immediately adjacent to where this redevelopment is being proposed, there's quite a bit of opposition. In the green and blue, you'll also notice what we anticipate to be increased traffic around that purple arrow. This is important to those of us with children because additional cars on the road obviously means potential additional accidents. Many people walk their children to school or have children walking to school. And that's something that is a huge concern to us. But this map, I think, really speaks for itself in terms of the level of opposition to this proposal. Our next slide here is really about why the city should deviate from its usual deference to the city's master plan. Of course, the city's master plan was done in 2007. But it clearly designates the future use of 8 Bonita Drive as a residential property. When I purchased that property, it was designated for NPD. And with respect to the presentation just before us, there will be no buffer between commercial use and residential use. Instead of being 8 Bonita Drive, it will now be my house. So there will be no buffer. And I think that needs to be clear. It's also important to say that there was a point about a perception of shifting from NPD to C2. This is in fact not a perception. This is an actual proposal to change what I think is a pretty substantial ask of this commission and certainly the city council. You know, my hope is that when cities like Homewood make plans, it's to allocate infrastructure dollars. It's that homeowners like all of us can make reliable decisions about where and how to invest in our homes. It's also a really important way for folks to think about investing in which neighborhoods they want to live in, where they want, what needs to be walkable, and how all of you spend your time. So I think this is no different. The next slide shows what's already happening. So on the left side of your screen, you'll see a photo that was taken in August 27 that I think is representative of some of the congestion that can occur on the site when traffic is already at peak. When there's increased patient overflow parking that spills into the streets. You can see there's even a car having difficulty coming up Bonita right there. And frankly, I've been one of those vehicles that's had difficulty parking, pulling out of my driveway. I've never complained about it. And in fact, get to see some friends of mine who go and visit the pediatric clinic who are there parking in front. But it is a problem that I think will increase, again, with, you know, not just potentially doubling the square footage of this facility, but increasing the number of patients and whatever is used for the future use of that commercial property. I think it's also important to note that that traffic has actually impeded progress on public works projects. There is a leak that frankly still is there. Because many times, like the photo on your right, there is a car that's impeding the progress. In this case, of the Birmingham Water Works Board to fix a leak that, again, continues to plague the street in front of our home. Next slide. So the third piece we alluded to earlier, and I think this is just really important. We've had a number of conversations with members of the city staff and past and present. And we believe this represents an unprecedented move of rezoning an NPD property to a C2 property, a commercial property. Again, what I would consider if I were in your shoes is what level of confidence this would erode among homeowners who could then say, well, who's next? Particularly on my street. And, you know, I think all of the people behind us today who are holding up no signs and who signed on to that letter are also worried about that. The diminished confidence this would produce for a homeowner in this city to invest in their home would be significant and substantial. And this isn't just about us as homeowners of 10 Bonita. It's about the integrity of the neighborhood. It's about the fact that for 100 years, that home has stood as a residential home with something next to it that was also a residential home. And I think that's something that should be taken to account. And finally, I think, and this part I think is really important. I was, for two years between 2018 and, or three years, between 2018 and 2020, I led economic development for the city of Birmingham. In that capacity, I worked with scores of property owners and developers on projects throughout the city. And each case, the property owner knew that it was the expectation of the planning commission, of the city council, and of the city leadership that they would actively, proactively engage the neighbors so that you could have the type of community that you want, that gets buy-in, that solicits, you know, input from the neighbors. And in this case, I think I'm disappointed to report that, you know, despite the many contributions that the owners of 8 Bonita Drive have made to this community, we've had one conversation. And it was actually because I reached out proactively when I heard about it from city staff. And I'm disappointed in that because in my opinion, you all want a process whereby the citizens and the residents of developed areas have an opportunity to voice their input before it gets to this point. And I think that that's, that process was not followed here. And if I were you, I would want to know that. So I'll close by saying, I am on the record as being about pro-development as you can get. And I, in fact, have built a career around that. But I also want to be clear that I'm pro-development when it's a good fit for the neighborhood and when the neighborhood is bought in. And this does not comport, not only with the style and substance of this neighborhood, it certainly doesn't comport with the desires of that neighborhood have expressed. So I hope you'll take that into consideration. And I hope you'll give your attention and further consideration to my neighbors.
I'm Debbie Brazil, and I live at 14 Bonita Drive. I'm on the opposite end of the block of 8 Bonita. And I wanted to share some slides today and just go into a little more detail of what we discovered. Some of this, I'm sure the planning committee already knows, but it was an encouragement for us. As we researched this, it was a comfort to know that rezoning regulations mention why we have NPD zoning intent. It's for homogeneous development to keep and preserve our neighborhood. We had a question that when we were researching and looking, it looked like the guidelines said for C2, 5,000 square foot area and application indicates a 7,160 foot square foot area. And I think the design is very nice. They went to a lot of trouble. But bearing in mind that my house is 3,300 square feet, it's two stories, it looks pretty big on the street. This would be like a complex. This is twice the size of the bigger homes on our street. So it's really going to stand out and tower. If you'll go to the next slide. We wanted to dive into the parking because we felt like if we made statements without showing our research, it could look absurd. Because it looks absurd to me, but it's not. The proposed plan talks about 24 parking spots, two being handicapped. They're going to have 12 exam rooms with 40 waiting room seats. Although right now, there's only four doctors in the practice, they added two in the recent years. There'll be room in this building to go up to four, to six doctors if they wanted. A typical pediatric appointment, as the slide says, is 15 to 20 minutes. This will lead to 36 patients per hour with only 22 parking spots, not counting the staff, doctors and nurses and lab techs, whoever. So parking calculations, if you went to the maximum of six medical assistants, doctors, plus patients, the waiting room for the next 12 patients waiting to be seen, would it be, and the need would be for at least 36 spots. This will lead, of course, to parking on Bonita and Lopredo. And we're not getting rid of the C2, which already overflows on Bonita. So we're very concerned about this. Next slide.
Ms. Brazil, I'm sorry, if you could just maybe get a little bit closer to the microphone.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
We need that for the minutes, just so we can understand exactly what you've said.
Thank you. So again, with the exam rooms being 12 and 40 waiting rooms, if you have four to six doctors seeing 20 to 25 patients per day, this is 120 to 150 additional cars, not counting their previous location. Since these cars will be coming to and from the office, there will be between 240 and 300 additional car trips in our neighborhood. So one route is Hollywood Boulevard, Ventura, and then they could come either down Bonita or pull off 31. But they can't leave on 31 because it doesn't go all the way across. So we're going to be faced with that much traffic in an old neighborhood with narrow streets. And also Hollywood Boulevard, I think, will be in a crunch with the addition, additional traffic. We did find a 2020 study, a traffic study that reflected that Ventura is going to become unacceptable even without zoning in delays and traffic. If you could show the next slide. Another concern we have is the stormwater runoff. Right now, it's grass and a house, a normal-sized home and driveway. If there's parking pad, a big doctor's office, a complex, that's going to be all concrete. Already, the lot slopes towards Ventura. And I think we didn't even need to look this up. But there is research and a study that shows Ventura and 31 tend to flood. I think they've worked on that. It's not as bad as it used to be. You used to not be able to drive through there when it rained. I think this will be an additional concern because of the sloping towards Ventura Avenue. And this slide, the city's 65 Historic Homes in Hollywood is something we're proud of. I mean, I think it's really cool. There's no other place like this in Alabama. If you'll go on to the next slide. The NPD designation of Hollywood exists for a reason. I think it was started in the late 80s to protect our neighborhoods. The story is that the builder, the developer, went to Hollywood, California and copied some of those styles and built them in the 20s. The character of these homes have been protected by NPD and the city's master plan. Just as Josh was saying, and I'll indicate on the next slide, a picture of his home is one of those historic homes on 10 Bonita. And so is Stan's. We got together and met to work on our proposal. And I walked out of Stan's house, he backs up to the current pediatrician's office, his front yard overlooks 8 Bonita. So what's going to happen to him? Is he going to go commercial next? Because he's going to be in a commercial complex, basically. I'm just really concerned about that. I care about my neighbors. On our block, across the street and the physical street on Bonita where they want to develop, folks have lived there 33 years, 27 years, 23 years, 14 years, and 13 years. Josh is our newcomer who stands the most to lose, he and Stan. I just wanted to point that out. This is Josh's home, the historical Spanish, and to the left, and Stan's is on the right, the one that's across the street. And it looks a little more modern, but it's from the 20s as well. So both of those are homes that we would hope to protect. And this is the Pearson's home on the street. And now I've got to try, oh, the Freeman's home that's across from me. And then one more slide shows the other homes. That's the Templeton's and the Brazil home. We've all lived here quite a long time and had intended to stay here. And we're really concerned about the increased traffic, the encroachment. So I just wanted to point that out, that we are not a business proposal. I know Dr. Stansel spoke to one of the neighbors who goes there, and he told her this was nothing personal, when she said she didn't support this because it's just business for him. Well, this isn't for us. This is our home. We live here. I have cats, they're going to get ran over. I have a preschool grandson. I don't, you know, I want to feel like, those of us that are becoming grandmothers on this street, that it's safe. I'm a pediatric nurse, I know kids get hit by cars in high-traffic areas. I didn't buy in a commercial real estate area. You know, I want to preserve what I've had for years. I love living in Homewood, and I think my neighbors care about preserving that. There's plenty of other spaces, commercial real estate available, that he would not lose his patient population. There's lots of places he could move to in Homewood. The future of the use of Eight Bonita Drive was determined residential, and we'd like for it to stay here. Next slide. I wanted to show these homes as I ended. This is Three Ventura, and it's directly behind the grassy area on Bonita that's, I would call the half lot, and then there's the home. This home, and next slide, Five Ventura, total $2 million. So when they suggest that this property could only be C2, he could make a lot of money developing this and keeping it residential. It's not hopeless. It's not beautiful the way it is right now, but that's what's possible. If we got somebody with him to show him how he could keep this and develop it, he would make money off it. And I think that's a win-win. He can put his business somewhere else, he can make money off this property, keeping it residential, and he can save the integrity of our neighborhood. And that's what's important to us as neighbors. Thank you for considering and hearing us out.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie's husband, Ellis, and I only have one comment to make. They've all talked about the traffic, but I want to emphasize the reason the traffic is so bad. It's because traffic gets redirected off of Highway 31 onto our street. Can somebody go back to the slide that showed the 48 neighbors who've said they don't want this? Well, thank you. Okay. So, you know, to the left is Highway 31, Independence Drive. This is one of the few, I don't know, my neighbor Wes Templeton drove all the way down 31. He said it's the only one where you've got commercial without a break in the median. So if you're coming south on Highway 31, and you need to get to this, to Eight Bonita Drive, how do you get there? You turn into Ventura, right there where the green is, you can buy those houses that have children, you turn onto Lopredo, you come up where they have houses with children, you come down Bonita, which is where we live, houses with grandchildren. We had our grandchild this afternoon. And you can also see that to get there, people coming in from Hollywood Boulevard have to come down, and all of the traffic gets concentrated on Bonita Drive. And it's, that's why the parking has been abysmal. Our calculations, we think, they're not only going to be parking down in front of our house, they're going to have to park in the next block of Bonita Drive, and that's why those folks are here too. So anyway, again, thank you for doing this. I appreciate y'all's efforts. It took a lot of work for us, and I can't imagine what y'all must go through every week to deal with this, but thank you.
Would you, before you go leave, would you sign that signing sheet?
Oh, sure.
Right in front of you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I've got a short 25 pager here, so we're good. So I'm Wesley Templeton, I live at 12 Bonita Drive, my wife and I, we've raised two Eagle Scouts there. And I'm going to try to read this and stay on topic or I'd be here all night, so. And I try not to tell these folks many of my bullet points, they wouldn't steal my thunder, but it happened. So Lynn and I have been, according to Architect, good citizens of Homewood for 43 years, we've lived on Bonita for 35. Our home was constructed in 1928, and we invested quite a bit of money in our home and don't want to see it devalued. We've run, run a successful business in Homewood since 1987, I'm on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I'll say upfront, I'll take a little offense at the fact that our street and Eight Bonita is not good for NPD residential housing. It seems to be pretty good for us for the last 35 years. So most everyone has maintenance on their homes, as you guys do, keeping it up to date and working. We, on the other hand, have to invest in keeping the place from falling down. Currently, we have 23 helicole appears just to keep the walls from falling off. So this investment, investment doesn't necessarily add value to our property, we just want to keep things, we want to do things right and, and leave it in good condition for the next generation. When I give directions to our house, I tell them as you turn, turn off 31, we're the third money pit on the left. So yeah, like Ellis said, this is the only street in Homewood, from here to the Galleria, actually, and, and more, that there isn't a, a street with a business on it that can't exit both ways on 31. It's the only street in Homewood like this. As far as the folks that are in favor, we agree with them that the Stansels are nice people, we've known them for years. He had, he and his other partners are good doctors, which brings us to the issue, the old saying of success is a good problem to have, but well, there's still, it's still a problem, right? So we're all in business, and if you've worked for the same company for a while, you've probably moved your offices from one location to another. After the move, it's, it's a little further for some employees to work, a little closer for the others, but business goes on. According to the statistics, pediatrician practices have the most loyalty and lose the least number of patients compared to other medical practices. My wife just, my wife and I just witnessed this personally, a medical professional moved out of our commercial building on Central Avenue to Vestavia and didn't lose a single patient. So obviously, Dr. Stansel's suffering from a good case of success, he has very supportive patients, and he needs to move into a larger space. As supporters, as far as supporters' interest in the building, a, a large office space on our street, basically, we have to say, well, you don't live on the street, you don't suffer traffic, and it's a six-day-a-week practice, not five. Again, this isn't personal against Dr. Stansel, known him a long time, but he lives on Lopredo Circle with zero cut-through traffic and doesn't realize, on the circle, and doesn't realize what dangerous speeding cars are like, nor cut-through traffic, because there isn't any where he lives. I heard the statement, well, since we're concerned about what might be built there, we're in favor of the Spanish-style building the Stansels are projecting. The problem with this thinking is first, there isn't a commercial-approved zoning for that home on Eight Bonita Drive. There's no danger of something being built there. So secondly, you don't live on Lopredo and Highway 31, so that, that empties on Highway 31 or Bonita. So again, it's just another vote for Stansels being nice folks, which we've said we all agree with. Dr. Stansel has about three years left on his existing lease at the current location, and the home on Eight Bonita Drive is leased until about December of this year. So there's no rush for Dr. Stansel to move his practice, and there's plenty of time to find the appropriate, perfect location. There are a lot of available commercial buildings and space out there that would work. I spoke to this council, I think it was back in 1994, when Dr. Levin purchased the existing Alabama pediatric building. The drawing showed a continuous drive from the Chevron building into, could you pull up the landscape slide that showed the landscape of the architect? So it showed the drive from Chevron being contiguous with the Alabama Patriotic, Patriotic But after the vote was approved, and getting advice from several folks regarding the danger of customers pulling out on 31 up near Chevron, Dr. Levine agreed to withdraw the plan and redraw the plan, and it put the dumpster under Stan's window and limited access to 31 by the only way of being, to get there on Bonita Drive. Currently, 100% of the doctor's traffic travels on Bonita Drive, either coming or going. Yeah. I'd like to draw your attention to the currently proposed dumpster. It's not on Highway 31, as you would, as it would be an eyesore, right? It's at the back door of Three Ventura Drive and the backyard of Ten Bonita Drive. With early morning pickup, it's hard to sleep, it's actually, and it's hard on a family that have small children. Stan, what time does your dumpster pick up? At your kitchen window?
4:30.
4:30. The, the current dumpster picks up at 4:30, not exactly sure, but I think due to NPD regulations, it's supposed to be later than that, pretty sure. So this is just business, right? Of course, it just seems personal to us, so without absolutely no intention of being insensitive, insensitive to those that are for tearing down the home at Eight Bonita and putting a dumpster at our back door in a parking lot in our front yard, unless you plan on purchasing a home at Bonita Drive, I don't think you have a good perspective of what's being asked of us. Basically, the neighborhood is against tearing down this home for a commercial building. I'm sure Jared at the Architectural Concepts can draw a beautiful Spanish-style home at Eight Bonita Drive, which could, we could all be proud of and will protect Dr. Stansel's investment. I know you folks have hard decisions to make. My brother told me once, after serving on the board at Indian Springs, on the zoning board at Indian Springs, you can generally only make 50% of the people happy, another 50% unhappy. In this case, it seemed like a simple decision to continue NPD zoning for this historic neighborhood, and not to tear down a home to build a large office building and add traffic to an already congested street. And saying that the, the parking lot is out back, that, that, what that really means is it's in Josh Carpenter's front yard, a vote no seems to be the only answer. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. And again, in light of the number of people here tonight, and the number of cases we have, if we could keep our comments as, as brief and concise as possible. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. I'll sign in first.
If you don't mind stating your name and address as well.
I'm Kathy Tullis, I live at 9 Pomona Avenue. And my father bought the house at 105 Hermosa Drive in 1950, and I was brought home from the hospital to that house. So I've lived in that neighborhood a very long time, off and on, I've moved to other places, but we bought the house at 9 Pomona to be behind my mother, when she was still alive. And what concerns me the most is the fact that when I was a child, my father brought me to City Hall meetings to fight against commercial encroachment in our neighborhood. And that's why I'm here, to honor his memory. I went to numerous meetings with him. He was in real estate, and he knew, the fact is, once you start commercial encroachment, where does it end? And also, once you zoned something commercial for one purpose, when that purpose, when those people move on, you have no control over what comes next, because it can be any in that long list of C2 zoning possibilities. And a lot of those would be, you know, unreasonable, really. But the other comment I have to make is, when my mother was 90 years old, she was able to walk to Piggly Wiggly to get her groceries if she wanted to. And if there were all these cars on those streets, that would no longer happen. I hope that I'll be able to walk to Piggly Wiggly when I'm 90, which isn't as far away as I think. But, but anyway, thank you for listening, and think about the fact that people, our, our neighbors have been up here trying to convince folks like you not to have commercial encroachment in our neighborhood for a very, very, very long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Blake Pearson, I live at 9 Bonita Drive. And I really actually only have one thing to say. I'd like to see a show of hands or no signs for people who are opposing this.
I think that speaks for itself. Okay, seeing no one else, we will close the public portion of the hearing and call the applicant back up for questions. I guess my, my question is, I had heard this in the presentation earlier, is, is their plans with the new facility, I assume have more capacity for more patients than the existing facility, is that part of the reasoning for this, for this request?
Give me to, give me to, okay. So I, I am Dr. Keith Stansel, I live at 321 Lopredo Circle, and I certainly appreciate everyone's comments, and, and we have tried to be very respectful of Homewood in Hollywood because this is our home. And when we set out to explore what we were going to do with this piece of property, we tried to see what would be, what we feel like would be the best use. In our current location, which, the building was built in 1996, and it's been great, okay? So we've been there now for almost 30 years, but as times have changed, the current configuration doesn't meet everything that we want to offer, okay? And one of the previous slides from the presentation earlier, there was a discussion about adding six doctors and 36 patients an hour and so forth. I'm not sure where those numbers came from, that's, I've never done that in 30 years. I don't see that being able to, to be accomplished, and that's not our goal. I'm not trying to create a mega pediatric complex to take over pediatric care in Homewood. What we have done over the last several years is tried to expand the services we provide to our patients, to our community. An example of that is that in the last six months, we've started to offer breastfeeding and lactation services to our patients. That takes space. We have a nutritionist who we have hired, who's also one of our physicians, to provide nutritional counseling for our patients, for, all the way up through college. So there are additional services that we would like to offer that we can't in our current configuration. And to us, it seemed a logical extension of our office to have the opportunity to use our current location as well as the new location that we're looking to build. Now, again, I don't own our current location, so I cannot stand here before you and guarantee that if you approve this rezoning, that I have control over our current location. I feel fairly confident that my former business partner of 21 years would continue to offer us the opportunity to have that location, but I cannot guarantee that. So I don't want there to be any misrepresentation of what we're here to say. But we are not trying to add an additional 20 exam rooms so we can bring in an additional 150 patients a day and generate 300 automobile trips along that road. That is just unrealistic for what we are wanting to do. The other thing I'd like to address is, there were pictures shown of cars parking on Bonita. Yes, there are certain times within our business that we have overflow parking onto Bonita. We've recognized that. We've also entered into an agreement with the Shades Valley Lodge on Hollywood Boulevard, which has an empty lot that's only used on Thursday nights for their meetings, and they've agreed to allow us to use off-site parking at that location for our employees and our physicians, and I park there every day, so that that frees up parking spaces for our patients to try and divert any parking off of Bonita. Now, we recognize it's not perfect, it can happen, it's going to happen, but we also recognize, anyone that lives in Homewood knows, people park on the street. So not every car parked on Bonita throughout the day is a patient or is not derived from coming to Alabama Pediatrics. Again, my biggest point here is that, you know, perhaps our lack of development from a business standpoint, from a real estate from a business standpoint, from a real estate standpoint, maybe that could be an excuse for us not engaging the community, reaching out, preparing nice PowerPoint presentations, getting out to the community and trying to steer up, you know, support. Maybe that was a mistake. However, as Homewood residents who are involved in this community, from a beautification board standpoint, in which my wife serves on that committee, from a garden club standpoint, where she has been president for several years of that, for myself, who's been on the Parking Rec Board, who is very active for Homewood City Schools, we are a part of this community. And we feel like this would give us the opportunity to continue that and also to have the ability to control what happens with that property. When we were approached to purchase that property, when it went for sale, and we were not actively looking for that, the reason it was brought to us is they recognized that that could have a significant impact on our business. And our initial thought was, no, we're, we're not looking to develop this property. We're not trying to expand Alabama Pediatrics to be the greatest, biggest, and dominant pediatric practice in Birmingham. But as we thought more about it, as a Homewood resident, as a Hollywood resident, and someone who has invested in the community, we felt like it would give us the opportunity to control what type of development would be done on that property. And that's why it was very important to us to develop a plan that is consistent with the neighborhood and with Homewood. As you saw in the previous presentation, all the lovely homes on Eight Bonita are beautiful, and they're all Spanish-style, except for the house on Eight Bonita. Now, you could come up with all kinds of different developments and designs for an office building, but it was very important for us to try to maintain that character of the neighborhood and trying to be consistent with honoring the, the integrity of the neighborhood, but then also allowing us to provide what I think is an important service to the community by taking care of kids and offering lots of, of different options. And, you know, there are plenty of people here tonight whose children we've taken care of or who we currently take care of. And I would say, in closing, the statement that, that it was only business to me is completely false. If I wanted to be just about business, I wouldn't have become a pediatrician. Okay? And what I want people to understand is, you're my friend. I take care of your children. You're my acquaintance. I understand if you have opposition to this. I am not going to take that personally if you oppose this plan. Because at the end of the day, I still want to be your friend. I still want to take care of your children. And I plan to be in Homewood and Hollywood for the duration. So whether this is approved, whether our business stays in its current location, whether we have to relocate to some other location, I hope that's not the case. But my feeling, my passion for what we do and my passion for this community will not change.
Thank you for that. Have y'all done any kind of traffic studies?
No, we had discussed it briefly, but we have not conducted a traffic study. I would say that based on our patient flow that we've had, on an average day, we probably see sixty to seventy patients a day. So the idea that it would, an expansion would generate two hundred and fifty to three hundred additional cars coming on that, on that road, I think is a very, very extreme situation. And as a business owner, look, if I could have that many people coming into my office and I could manage that on a day, I'd be doing really well. But that is not the case, that I, I do not see how that would ever be the case with what we are currently proposing. But, you know, if a traffic study is something that would be beneficial to the, to the council or to the commission to try and, you know, in their consideration for what we're doing, we would not be opposed to considering that.
Mr. Chairman, a few things. I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I have a few things to preface before my comments. The state of Alabama gives property owners the right to request rezoning. That is a state right that is given to them that the city of Homewood cannot override. And we appreciate Dr. Stansel and Laura for the service that they've given to Homewood and the longevity of their business here in Homewood. The two issues tonight are rezoning NPD and voting against the neighborhood, period. That's it. We have an eight-square-mile city with a limited amount of NPD, and we are landlocked. And there is nowhere for us to go. So we must, in my opinion, protect NPD because once it's gone, it's gone forever. I want to point out that we received over fifty emails, in addition to the map, that were opposed, and they were all individual emails. They were thoughtful. They were well-written. They came from that individual's perspective. They were not a form letter that had a signature on them. They were all well-written, long, thoughtful emails. I was personally moved by the Templeton's animals that have been run over, over the years. But I do want to mention that the four that we did receive in favor of, only three, I'm sorry, only one, was actually adjacent to the property on Ventura. The others were neighbors of, they live in Hollywood, but not necessarily impacted by this decision on Bonita. And I also wanted to point out, the property on Three Ventura, I was on the council when they came to us to have access to Highway thirty, or to have access to Ventura, rather, rather than access to property on thirty-one. And nobody knew what they could do with that property. I mean, no one had any idea what could be done with that property and that household like that. So I want to thank the Stansels. It is a lovely building. It is, you know, I appreciate the idea of trying to keep it in concert with the rest of the architecture in the community. But I really appreciate the neighbors that have came out and have expressed their opinions. And in my opinion, we just cannot, we cannot, that is a slippery slope, to rezone NPD. We just, once it's gone, it's gone. And I have never not voted with the neighbors, and that will not change tonight.
Yeah, if there are no further questions from the commission, I would entertain a motion to approve a vote on this case.
All right, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve RZ two-five dash oh-three dash oh-one.
Second.
Mr. Goulas?
No.
Ms. Andrews?
No.
Mr. Henninger?
Got to abstain in this case.
Mr. Respento?
Oh, no.
Ms. Wilcott? And Mr. Roberts?
No. So your case will proceed to the City Council with a five-zero negative reference or recommendation from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I call the next case and give everyone, if you're planning on leaving, just a minute or two to make a quick exit, try to get ahead of this weather.
Basketball road, right, right way, that's like eighty gallons of water holding it.
Yeah. Right, right, as we were getting started.
Yeah, I would like to thank everyone for coming. We do, we do have four more cases tonight, so if you are leaving, we'd ask you, you go ahead and scoot out. Thanks. Okay, we're going to move on to the next set of cases. They are four related cases. The first one being a request for rezoning and a request for approval of a final development plan for...
It's a series of addresses.
Yeah, I'm looking for the address. This would be for the West, the West Creekside Development. And the, the applicant is Landmark Services Company Development Services Company and Sanford University, if the applicant would come forward. And also, my understanding is, is that the applicant's going to present on the next two cases, which are RZ twenty-five oh-three oh-four and FD twenty-five oh-three oh-four oh-five, rather, which relates to the East Creekside Development. If the applicant would come forward and state your case, please.
Good evening. Robert Dunn with Landmark Development. We have a fairly short presentation this evening that we'd like to walk through, and hopefully this will address many of your questions. I'm sure there will be others. But what we tried to do was capture the, kind of the foundational elements of the application that we've submitted for the Creekside District, both east and west. We've started a process of community engagement and want to walk through some of the questions that we've been hearing from stakeholders from within the community and some of the things that we've done thus far to address questions that we could have reasonably anticipated, some new issues that have come up, and things that we've thought about as we've been working to put the application together that's come before the city. I'll just quickly walk through the, the materials and then happy to answer any questions that you have. As we discussed a few weeks ago, this is a joint application on behalf of Landmark Development, Johnson Controls, and Sanford University for both sides of the Creekside Development, west and east. And I'll, I'll explain those separate from one another. But generally speaking, they're, they relate to one another. One side doesn't happen without the other. This is a, a general map that speaks to the overall Sanford Horizons Plan that over the last months and really going back a couple of years, we've developed with Sanford University. One, one point I want to stress is, this really is a continuation of Sanford's master plan and the realization of the master plan. This is not new subject matter necessarily. The plan has evolved as really all master plans evolve. And through the work that we've been doing and, and the projects that are being constructed that you've approved on campus, the Creekside District is really the next stage of development that has been contemplated by Sanford for some time. And we've done a tremendous amount of work to put definition behind what we envision the, the nature and the program and the opportunities to be with the Creekside District. So this really isn't new information. It's really the evolution, as I said, and the realization of, of Sanford's plan. There are two parts to the application. There's really four parts to the application. Both the rezoning of, of the Creekside West and East districts, as well as the approval of the development plan for both. We've worked closely with city staff. Appreciate the engagement that we've had with city staff. I believe it's fair to say that the application that we submitted had, you know, an amount of depth and information that I think we believe was thorough, well-thought-out. Was through an exchange with your staff that we developed that application, and hopefully you found it to be a good representation of the plan for both Creekside West and East. The nature of the rezoning, if you go back a slide, on Creekside West, the property is currently zoned, planned mixed-use PMUD, as you refer to it here in the city. The plan is to rezone to a mixed-use district. Likewise, on Creekside East, also zoned PMUD, our proposal there is to rezone to an institutional district, I-three. One point I want to stress here is, while, while much of what we have planned conforms to current zoning, we felt in the, in the early discussions that, that we began with Sanford, our consultant team, with the city staff, that the most appropriate way to advance the Creekside District, west and east, was through the, the MXD District. Number one, it, it really does provide for all of the uses that we contemplate within that district. Number two, we felt that it gave us the opportunity to put good definition behind all of the elements of the plan and begin a process of community engagement. One of the things that has been at the heart of all the work that we've done with Sanford is how does Sanford become even more of a community partner with the city, with the school district, and with other stakeholders, and really use this opportunity to create, hopefully, a new standard for how land use, land use planning can evolve in a way that's compatible with community interests? This is the beginning of a process. It's, it's not the end. And while we'll, we'll share ideas and information that we've developed, analysis that we've done to support what we believe is a, you know, can become a very important development for the community, there's a lot more work to do as we've now started the process of community engagement. So we just felt that the best way to move forward on this was to come forward through a rezoning process and use the rezoning process for a robust community engagement. And so hopefully that proves to be a worthwhile effort for the city, for Sanford, for us as investors, and ultimately for the community overall. The plan, as with any, any phase development like this, will evolve to the best of our ability. It's challenging in this kind of multi-phase development. In some respects, we're trying to predict the future. We've done a tremendous amount of work to understand things like, where do we feel there's market demand? What are the programmatic elements that are important, and I would say critically important, to the future of Sanford University? And in a similar way, how can those same programmatic elements be supportive of the school district and the community at large? Through all of that effort, you know, we've learned a lot. And we've tried to frame a land use plan based on a certain program. And we feel confident that the plan that you have before you and the application is representative of ultimately what will be built there. But it will, it will be built over time. It will be built in phases. And part of what we like about the zoning structure that you have in the city is it recognizes this will evolve. And to the extent that there are changes, those will require potentially amendment to the development plan. And so we understand that. We've, to the best of our ability, tried to think through all of the things that will become relevant to evolving a somewhat complex and phased development like we've proposed for Creekside. So just go back for a minute to the, the environment here is intended to be mixed use, mixed use in its nature. As we know, mixed use brings together a diverse series of different programmatic elements. We see that as an advantage. Strong emphasis on pedestrian-oriented, meaning that this is an environment that we want to create that will strengthen and enhance pedestrian connectivity from within the site, between the site and the school district, the recreational property to the east, and then ultimately across Lake Shore Drive onto campus. One of the things that we'll talk about is a pedestrian bridge that will span Lake Shore Drive. To us, that's one of the fundamental infrastructure elements that we want to see come together as a part of this plan. And there's much more work to be done on that. But those are the types of things that we've been focused on is, how can we create truly a community-oriented, pedestrian-oriented program and environment that has positive impacts throughout the community and also... community and also does things to reduce traffic counts and those sorts of things? It really has become fundamental to this type of urban land use planning that we see in cities, large and small, throughout the country. The other point that I want to draw particular emphasis to is, is hopefully you can appreciate, with Sanford as our partner, and it's something that I take great pride in with our company, is this is an opportunity, and this is fundamental to the application that we've provided you, to create engagement with the community and identify ways to advance land development with stewardship in mind, and advance development planning in a way that is in harmony with the watershed, and doing things here that ultimately improve the watershed and the Greenway and all of the community assets that Homewood is well-known for. That is as fundamental to this plan as any other aspect of the plan. Sanford has been here for generations. Sanford will be here for generations. There is nothing that we have done here that has not been thought of through the lens of, how does Sanford, you know, take a lead role? How do we take a lead role as their partner in doing something where at its core, it's about stewardship and doing things to improve the watershed? When you read the watershed management plan, you know, it speaks of things like that, improving access to the Greenway, heightening educational opportunities to create better understanding of what are the things that can be done to mitigate the negative impacts that can occur to the watershed? How do we address things that we know to be important to the community, like protecting the salamanders and the crossing of Lakeshore Drive and what have you? How can we create a more safe, secure environment to move people across Lakeshore Drive, things like the bridge? So, we have tried to take those ideas into account in every aspect of the plan. But again, I want to stress, this is the beginning of that process. We had our first community session last evening. It was well-attended. We have a website up. We've had a lot of feedback. I'm happy to say, it doesn't always work this way, but I'm happy to say, the majority of that feedback has been very positive and has been seeking further information and engagement. And that is what we are hoping for. Through that process, we will learn. We'll do our best to understand. We'll look to find smart solutions to important issues, to a whole different series of stakeholders that we met last night from within the community. So, our hope is, our commitment is, that this will create a new platform for land use planning in harmony with the watershed and other important issues to the community. This table, I won't go through in great detail. It's really a summary of the land use application, and it gives you, I think, a good synopsis of the program as we have presented it in the land use application. We identify several sites across the, this is Creekside West. Across Creekside West, the A, B, and C site, that really relates to the phasing. We've tried to identify, again, to the best of our ability, to predict the future, the overall program. We've spoken to issues that are important under your zoning code, like height. And then, obviously, one of the key factors that we have to measure and address is parking. The capacity for parking on the site, as we've planned, as we've built the development plan, exceeds the demand or the programmatic need for parking on the site. So, we feel like we've addressed the issues that are important to putting a development like this together at a program that is, you know, in total, a little over 800,000 square feet. So, happy to go into this in much greater detail. This plan shows the Creekside East application submission that we've given you. In order to activate the development of Creekside West, it will require relocation of the track and field complex that sits on Site B in Creekside West. This is something that we've spent a great deal of time with Sanford on. I met with Dr. Taylor, Dr. Coyne today. Again, we've taken this to the trustees and opened up the idea of not just relocation of that complex, but relocation of that complex. What you see in the land use plan is actually separating track and field. Part of the reason for that is, we feel that that's a, creates more opportunity for use of those facilities. We've opened up discussion with the school district and the high school, see this as potentially being a community asset. And so, as we've begun to look at the opportunities for development east, the idea is to create a, you know, a community-centered recreational environment that will support, obviously, Sanford athletics, hopefully in time, Homewood High School, and other interests within the community that can benefit from this type of public green space recreational use. So, that plan represents what the current thinking is, and there's more work that has to be done there as well, to work through the floodway issues and a whole series of different engineering factors that we have to further engineer and develop. But we have to start with, obviously, approval of a land use plan. One of the last points that I want to touch on, and then I'll speak more specifically about some of the issues that we picked up through the start of our engagement process. But this slide just gets at issues that we anticipated, that we tried to speak to in the application, as well as our efforts of community engagement started some time ago. We've started outreach with organizations and individuals within the community to begin to listen and learn about what's important to them and how we can create this plan, you know, as a community partnership. And I think this probably speaks to nearly all of the feedback that we've had, meaning things like, people, there's been interest in, how can we create a community, neighborhood-centric lifestyle set of amenities as sort of the heart and soul of the plan? And as I said the last time we were before, we will share some images with you tonight that hopefully give you a sense of the nature of the development. Obviously, Shades Creek, environmental stewardship, the watershed, we've had a tremendous amount of feedback there. I think we've been able to define issues of importance. And now, what we're hoping for is if we can set the format, the framework of a land use plan, then we can get to work really putting the right people at the table and coming up with good solutions that can enhance the watershed, not degrade the watershed. Safety and security, given the nature of the development that we anticipate here, it will have a strong draw from within the community and particular neighborhoods that are in, you know, close proximity. The bridge is critically important to that. We've done the preliminary engineering on the bridge. You know, it's a structure that's going to take some time and effort to figure out. Ultimately, we'll have to go to the state with that. But our hope is, again, if we can lock in on a land use plan in partnership with the city and the community, hopefully, we can present a case that ultimately brings us to a point where we can secure the opportunity to build the bridge across Lakeshore Drive. Pedestrian connectivity is a big part of everything we do today, creating these, pedestrian-oriented environments just dominates this type of mixed-use development. Traffic and roadway improvements, I'll come back to that in a minute. We've completed now our traffic impact analysis. We've submitted that to the city. We have learned a good amount through that study, and I think it confirms a number of the points of importance where we feel, while we will generate new traffic, there are a number of mitigating factors that we've been able to identify in that analysis that speaks to the importance of, obviously, traffic on Lakeshore Drive. Academic excellence, I mean, Homewood is certainly a city that is defined by academic excellence. In our meetings with the school district, have met a number of parents, look forward to meeting with the school board. We really view this as an opportunity, in many different respects, to use the Creekside Development as a way to strengthen and heighten academic excellence for Sanford, for the high school, and for the community at large. And that's something that, as I'm sure you can appreciate, with a university as our partner, everything that's done there is really about academic excellence. Had a number of conversations last evening and prior to last evening. We have a great consultant team. We have been very focused on an issue that we know to be of great importance in Homewood, which is the migration of salamanders and the impact on Lakeshore Drive. I'm not going to stand before you tonight and say, "We have the absolute solution," but we want to engage with the community to explore ways to protect the habitat, potentially look at ways to improve the migration as it relates to Lakeshore Drive, and begin to look for a pathway here to improve a situation that, you know, really is a, again, one of these foundational elements that we've learned about in the city of Homewood. And the last point is, and I'll speak to this in just a minute, Sanford-affiliated housing. We have done quite a bit of work to look at programmatically where we see demand. One of the things that we see with university environments across the country is the importance of creating a residence base in and around campus. Now, we don't, as we shared with you the last time, we will be coming back to you with our plan, which relates to the Bulldog District, which is north of Lakeshore. That's primarily where we see student residents being built. But there will be some student residents built, south of Lakeshore and Creekside, really for upperclassmen, law students, what have you. But we have an idea for what we call Sanford-affiliate housing, which I'll walk you through what we mean by that. But that is one of the fundamental programmatic elements that we are hoping to secure your support for as part of the overall Creekside District plan. So, these are issues that we've talked a lot about. These are issues that we've studied. Certainly, these issues, we've started a process of engineering. All of these issues we know to be of importance to the community. And as I said, I'll end the discussion with kind of what our hope is as we move through this process. But if we can start with the framework of a plan, the immediate focus that we then need to shift to is community engagement and really building out the solutions to the issues that were on that previous slide. And obviously, there are others. But those are the ones that have really dominated the discussions that we've had from within the community. This is just a slide that gives you a sense of the meeting, the first of a series of listening sessions that we're hosting. As I said, well-attended. Met with a good number of people last night. Frankly, a lot of very positive feedback. And as you would expect, you know, heard some issues that caused concern among residents. And our job is to do our very best to speak to those issues. And the only way we can do that is to work with you, establish a plan, and then begin to work on addressing the things that that plan relates to within this sort of framework of community interest. So, we, I know we have a website up. The media was there last night. Your staff has been great to help us create an awareness of when we're hosting these sessions. And we will continue to do that well on into this process, even after we hopefully secure your support and approvals within the city. So, I think we have four more points that I just want to touch on, and then happy to address any questions. Traffic, and these are in no particular order, but everyone has a concern of traffic. We certainly are not interested in creating a development that struggles with traffic. Obviously, our responsibility has been to complete a traffic impact analysis. We've learned a lot through that analysis. The greatest impact that the development generates in terms of trip, new trip generation, relates to the retail. To flip that around, the retail program is not extensive. It's not hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail that have massive parking requirements. But there is a retail programmatic element that really is kind of the heart and soul of the Creekside District. So, we measured the impacts of, you know, let's call it, traffic increase, traffic growth, which is generally driven during the peak periods, mostly by the retail. Along with that, you know, you could study 2:00 AM, but there's not a lot of traffic. At 2:00 AM, we started, studied morning, you know, the afternoon pickup period with the high school, and frankly, with Sanford. Then, you know, the evening period when your traffic impacts are the greatest. What we learned is, we do generate trips, but there are also a number of mitigating factors that offset the trip generation. What do I mean by that? Couple of things. Number one, there's a, in a pedestrian environment like this, we use this term internal capture, but by creating a stronger pedestrian-oriented environment, it reduces reliance on car movement. Think of a Sanford student. Nearly everything that a Sanford student does today that they cannot do on campus requires movement by car. And there's a tremendous amount of activity that's generated every single day, trip generation from students on campus. And it's not just students, right? If faculty want to go somewhere for lunch, or they've got something to do in the community, it necessitates movement by vehicular. By creating this pedestrian-oriented environment and the type of amenities that we envision in the Creekside District, not all, but a great percentage of that traffic will be mitigated. So, that's the type of mitigating circumstance that we've identified. Second point that I want to emphasize is, with the Bulldog District in particular, which is new residents, new student housing on campus, that brings students on campus. And a high percentage of students today are commuters. Sanford has a residency requirement for nearly the entire student body and can't meet the residency requirement today. So, by bringing students on campus in residence, that has a significant reduction impact on traffic, all day, every day. So, that's mitigating circumstance. The third point is the pedestrian bridge, creating, you know, this linkage between not just students at Sanford and faculty and what have you, or, you know, those at the high school, but also from within the community. If this really moves in the direction that we expect it to, you will have a lot of movement from neighborhoods to this site that's non-vehicular. And that's kind of the ultimate goal, frankly, in almost any community we've worked in for years and years now, is how can we mitigate traffic by heightening pedestrian connectivity? And so, traffic, we've done a good amount of work. I think we've got one more slide here. There are a set of recommendations that come out of the traffic impact analysis, and we sort of captured them here. Three things that I'll touch on. The traffic signal timing, right now, it runs free at peak periods. There are some operational changes that would be proposed at the intersection that our traffic experts believe will have a positive impact on traffic movement. Along with that, there is width, there's capacity to add a turn lane onto Lakeshore Drive. That will have a significant positive impact on traffic movement and all the queuing that occurs during peak periods. And the third point is extending some of the turning lanes that exist now along Lakeshore Drive. Again, that will help the queue that occurs at peak periods. So, we were pleased to see that the recommendations to maintain service at the interchanges was not requiring what we would otherwise characterize as heavy infrastructure investment. These are more modest improvements that the experts tell us can have a very positive impact, in addition to the things on the previous slide, to improve traffic at full development of the Creekside District. So, that work has been completed. We've shared that study with city staff. And at this point, not going to say there will be no traffic impacts, but the mitigation factors are real, and they're significant, and they go a long way toward mitigating the added traffic that a development like this will generate. Issue number two, environmental stewardship, Shades Creek. I mean, we could spend all night on this, and we will spend a lot of time on this. It is clearly one of the, as I said, one of the fundamental elements of this plan, really Sanford Horizons overall. There's a lot of work that we're doing now on campus with the projects, the four projects that you've improved. There's more work coming on campus. You know, we have a partner that has, you know, a great presence in the community and beyond through the Department of Biological Environmental Sciences. We are engaging the department, and we're looking to engage other stakeholder groups in the community, really to help us build this plan in terms of how we can improve and address stewardship as it relates to the watershed and Shades Creek and the Greenway and all the above. And these are just... And, and these are just, you know, a bullet point list of the types of things that we've started to discuss. And frankly, the, the objective, we talked about this today in our meetings at Sanford, the objective is, while there's a lot of surface on the site now, you know, it impacts the watershed, and to build a development like this, obviously, we're going to impact the watershed, but the goal in the end is, even with development, to improve water quality, to create control mechanisms, to manage stormwater events, et cetera. I mean, that's really the objective, is how can we do a better job of developing in harmony with the watershed? And if we can't do that in partnership with Sanford and the community, I would argue it cannot be done. So, this is as fundamental to the plan as any other aspect. It's as important as the buildings, the traffic, every other aspect of this. So, again, this, this is the beginning of this process. It's not, we seek your approval, and then this part is done. We're, we're only at the infancy of really addressing these issues, and this will continue on well beyond construction. I mean, if we do this right, there's really an operational aspect of this that will carry on forever and really become a case study in how to improve water quality, water management by thinking through development in a more intelligent way, building core infrastructure that is proven to have a positive impact on the watershed. So, we'll talk a lot more about this. We've been very encouraged by the interest we've seen among stakeholder groups in the community, and I'm confident, I'll put the reputation of our company, and I won't speak on behalf of Sanford University, but this is an important objective to everybody that's been involved thus far. Third point really is about bulk, density, height, the magnitude of development that, that we're planning here. It's a large site. You know, we've had discussions about varying degrees of density and development. We, we think we've found the right balance, or at least we've begun to frame a, a plan that we believe can strike the right balance of, of density and bulk and height. We, we wanted to be very, you know, open and direct with you. Generally speaking, the development plan that we've created is intended to be in harmony with the scale of development up and down Lake Shore Drive, with one exception. Phase one, the first phase of development, we would like to have the opportunity to develop a building of some additional height, ten, eleven stories, twelve, something in that magnitude. The market will ultimately dictate how tall that building becomes, but that's really what this graphic represents, is you see Sanford University to the right. That tall building in the center of the slide is that one building which would be potentially hotel, some amount of retail and residential. And there's a variety of reasons that, that we feel height is important there, not the least of which is, there's some challenging subgrade conditions that we're trying to address, and one of the ways to address that is to compress the overall footprint of the development on the site. So, I know when we met earlier, the city staff, and, and I think we had some questions from commissioners, you know, help us understand the scale and the height and what have you, and so, there's one building on the, on Site A within Creekside West where we're seeking a level of height that exceeds anything in the immediate area. When you study it, though, in a section, you also come to realize that when you look at it in section with sort of Lake Shore Drive as the center point, given the grade transition north and south, don't believe that it's a building that will appear as a tall building necessarily, and, you know, immediately to the north of that site is the tree line that you see. So, we hope this is something that you'll consider. It's a part of the application that we've submitted. The other buildings that surround it, you know, it gives you a scale to the left there of, of the buildings that will surround it, and the, the darker gray that's off the left edge of that taller building, that's the existing office building today. So, that's kind of a reference point for us. Nearly everything around it is, is within ten, twelve feet of the height of the office building, up or down. And the last slide speaks to Sanford affiliated housing. This is an important issue to us. We know there's a lot of history with respect to housing in Homewood. What we have done is, is organized a plan with Sanford that really speaks to the things that we know are important to the future of the university, and we feel will meet the demand that we see within the community for, for multifamily housing and the potential owner occupied housing. And so, we've created this concept that we refer to as Sanford affiliated housing. When we were last before you, you, you asked me very specifically, well, explain to us what do we mean by Sanford affiliated housing? So, this is the simplest way that we can characterize what that means. Number one, all residents will be a part of a Sanford sponsored programs that work to the benefit of Sanford University. What does that mean? You see a list here, health and wellness. If, if I'm a resident, like many developments like this, if I'm a resident, within my lease, if I'm a rental resident, within my lease, I will, I will secure a set of amenities, an amenity package that ties back to Sanford University. So, for instance, health and wellness. One of the anchoring elements that we're building as part of the Creekside District is a wellness program, which will have a variety of different programmatic elements to it, with the health sciences program that I can enroll in as a resident of this facility. It's an elective. It's a service I buy through my rent, and it ties to Sanford because Sanford is our sponsor in creating and building that program. Number two, probably easier to understand, is academic, right? If I'm enrolled, law student, for instance, a graduate student, or I am involved in continuing education and other educational academic programs tied to Sanford. Doesn't mean if I'm a student and I'm, I'm going to school elsewhere that I meet the qualifications, but if I'm aligned with academics at Sanford, then I would be a, let's call it qualified resident. Third is sports and athletics. One of the things we identify is what we call benefactor status, but in other words, if, if I participate at Sanford through athletics and other programming like that, right? Again, that's a tie, that's a commitment, that's a, that's a partnership, if you will, that I have with Sanford. Same holds true with performing arts, community programming. There's a lot that goes on, on campus that, you know, people part, community members participate in, right? If I'm an active participant through those programs, I would be a qualified resident. And then the others that are probably easier to under, senior housing, over fifty-five, I would be a, you know, I would fit in the definition of a Sanford affiliate. And then last, owner occupied. We do expect that a certain number of the residential units that we anticipate building here will be owner occupied, not market rate rental. So, we can get into more detail on this. We've been very careful to begin to build this program in a way that it addresses, you know, a whole series of different requirements that we have to address, but this is to try and put definition around when we say Sanford affiliate housing, exactly what we mean by that, and ultimately Sanford is a beneficiary of all of the residents who reside here by way of their rent and enrolling in these programs. I believe that's the, the last slide. I'll, I'll just walk through some of these images quickly. I, I want to stress that these are conceptual. While they don't necessarily look conceptual, they are conceptual, but if you take what you have in the, in the land use application, the rezoning application, and you take the, the identified buildings, and you, you put geometry around those buildings and begin to think about architecture and the environment we're trying to create, that's really what this exercise is intended to help us address. So, this would be, if you go back, this would be as you come in off Lake Shore Drive, begins to give you a sense of the, the scale of the development, as we said, very pedestrian oriented, very much mixed use, and a scale and density that's, that we feel is, is, you know, very much in line with the development up and down Lake Shore Drive. And we'll just walk through a series of images, and I'll, I'll do my best to explain where you are. This is really intended to be the heart and soul of the development, what we call the pavilion. Strong emphasis on, on restaurant dining, but we've concepted this community space that you see under the, under that structure. We've done a lot of this type of development. These community spaces really become, you know, civic, the centerpiece of the community with the right programming and activation. In so many ways, these really become defining elements of a community, and we believe very strongly that this will become one of the things that the city of Homewood is known for, and something that residents and beyond, students, the community at large, really takes advantage of. And so, you can see it's, it has a strong pedestrian orientation. This begins to give you a sense of this idea of creating this gateway to the Greenway, to the Creekside, but then this would lead you to the bridge over Lake Shore Drive up to campus. Again, the idea here is, is to do things that, that really hopefully create opportunity for the community to, to better engage the Greenway, and to have amenities that really speak to the interests of the community. Done right, we, we think this will become, again, one of these identified gateways that, that really is a defining element of the city of Homewood for generations to come. This is just an image shot from within that pavilion building, looking down on that, on that plaza. If done right, you know, there should be activation on that plaza nearly all day, every day, and really become a great focal point where people want to gather. And it just, again, gives you a sense of the orientation of Sanford. You see, obviously, you know, up onto the, onto campus, how this relates between Sanford and, and Creekside, and between Creekside and, and the university. Again, just another image of, from within space out to that plaza and the, the type of activation that we anticipate. I think this next slide is my favorite image of all. You know, imagine the, the Battle of Lake Shore, you know, you create this great community space where the Homewood band is, you know, this becomes kind of its stage. We've even thought, you know, you could have ideas like the, you know, the Battle of Bands, Homewood High School Band, you know, competing against other great bands, and create a real community activation off of that. I mean, a hint of creativity and thoughtfulness and engagement with the community, there's just an endless set of ideas like this, where you really can create a place that people value as one of those things that they really see as a draw to the city of Homewood. This is looking down one of the retail streets, you know, we've, we've, again, tried to put real emphasis on, on the scale, the character, the quality, creating an environment that, that frankly really is a draw to students, Sanford, but also the high school, in harmony with one another. You know, a lot of people talk about this type of development near universities. We have a very different perspective here. This is community first, and Sanford residents, students, faculty, et cetera, fit into that formula. This is not, you know, college town USA like we've seen in, in a lot of cities throughout the country. And this is just another image that hopefully helps give you a perspective. What you see in the center back of this rendering is the existing office building. And so, again, we've tried to measure everything, more or less, in scale to the office building, and I think this does a good job of, of giving you a sense of the density, the scale, the mixed use nature of, of what we're proposing. And then there's the last couple of slides here, Creekside East now, obviously. This is what we're beginning to think about in terms of the placement of the fields, the programmatic use of the fields. It's, it's a little hard to see, but that building would replace the building that exists now with the track and field complex, but we also see that as an important community asset, and, and really sort of the portal to the Greenway. If you can see that, that, that pathway sort of breaks off from that building down to the Greenway, and, and we're trying to think about ways that we can create, you know, sort of points of entry, if you will, to the Greenway, and, and there could be educational opportunities here. One of the comments that came from a conversation I had with a gentleman at, at the listening session last evening was, really, how can we bring education to this with respect to Shades Creek? And create a place that, you know, is, is where the community can engage to better understand what, what are the, what are the factors of importance? How is this development really being done in harmony? Create an educational opportunity that, that helps people better understand the importance of things like stormwater management and things that have been done and are being done to mitigate impacts on, on Shades Creek. So, you can imagine how a, a building like that, that otherwise might be used, you know, hours in a day or days in a week, could really take on a much more active role in the community as a, as a, kind of a center point for education in relation to environmental stewardship. And so, again, these are ideas, we're, we're not saying we've, we've solved for all of this, but these are the types of things that we really want to advance with, with you and, and within the community. And so, this gives you a sense of it. What I, what I'll close with is, you know, we've, we've been a part of, of a lot of projects over the years, and, and you've advanced a lot of projects in the city. Our ask tonight is, is for your, you know, approval and recommendation to move to the council, and, and the reason that we're asking for that is, obviously, we filed the application, but in order to do the, the things that we, that we are looking to do with the community, we, we have to start with the framework of a plan. Otherwise, we're just, we're constantly in circular motion. If, if we don't really know what the genesis of the plan is, which is defined by land use, then it's hard to think through what are the opportunities within the community to address the types of things that, that I've referenced in the presentation. And so, our hope is that we start with this, and as we begin to move forward, we are committed to a process of engagement within the community. I mean, frankly, Sanford would have it no other way. But without that, without the land use plan, we're just guessing at what issues we're trying to solve for. So, we hope that what we've submitted to you was, was well developed, as I said earlier, is clear. We hope that you view this as an open, transparent effort to build partnership with the city and with the community, and give us the chance to move this from, you know, our ideas and a framework of a plan, to now move into a process where we can put real definition to some of these ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. This is a public hearing, so we're going to open up the public portion, and, and then we'll have questions for you after that.
Very good.
And again, just to remind everyone, we do appreciate your comments. If we try to keep those, I think we have weather coming in very soon, if we try to keep our comments brief and to the point, that would be appreciated, but we, we definitely want to hear from you. And again, as a reminder, as you come up, please state your name and address orally, and also write them down on the pad. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Jeff Baker. I live at fifteen three one Woodridge Place, three five two one six. That was a great presentation. I heard the word "community" a couple hundred times. I heard "community engagement" a lot. My neighbors and I were engaged seven days ago, and we received a letter from Homewood in the mail advising us of this meeting, where I think we're on final reading for this? No, where are we? First reading?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Is there a vote this evening for approval?
Yes, but this is the beginning of the process. It'll go to the city council from here. So, this will just be an advisory vote, and then up or down, regardless, it goes to the city council. It'll be in a planning and development committee, which is in my committee, and then there'll be a public hearing at the city council. So, we're at the very beginning of the process.
Okay, good. So, we need more community engagement. There hasn't been enough hearing on this, and there are issues with this development that are fairly obvious, I think, from the presentation. A hundred, a hundred and fifty foot tall building is completely out of scale with the existing developments all up and down the valley. It's out of scale with this development, and frankly, what is that, fifteen stories? At ten feet a story? I, I don't know where the closest fifteen story building would be to this building, but it's too much for that community to bear, and it's too tall relative to everything else that's going on up and down the valley. A development like this also brings, I guess, two potential burdens with it: noise and light. And the schematics, the design schematics that were shown were instructive because they showed several open globe light fixtures, non-directional. Those are not appropriate to this type of development. All the lighting should be directional. All the lighting should use best practices to prevent urban light pollution. Same with sound. I, I think what we hear is that we're going to have a, a vital environment that's going to make some noise, but amplified music shouldn't be allowed in this, this development. There shouldn't be any PA systems at use outside any outdoor areas. All of these things contribute to a little bit of nuisance for the surrounding community that we'd like to avoid if possible. So we would appreciate your consideration of those issues as this process moves forward. I've been a neighbor with Sanford University for 25 years now, sharing the valley with them. I think they're a pretty good neighbor, but they're not always the most attentive to these issues. Last week, the lights in the, the baseball stadium were on 72 hours continuous. My, my bedroom was illuminated all night long for three days. These things happen, but I think this particular development calls for the use of some care because it can have, if not handled properly, a great impact on both my neighborhood and the future development of the valley in, in general. So we appreciate your consideration of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Blackwood. I'm a member of Friends of Shades Creek. I live in Homewood. I live at 401 Woodland Drive. I just signed in. And we talked about earlier about this plan being something that we've talked about for a while, and I just wanted to let you know that we just found out about this plan over the weekend. I'm in a group called Friends of Shades Creek and we have around 200, 300 members of our group. We're a 501(c)(3). You probably have heard of the Salamander Festival. We put that on just about 30 days ago for Homewood. We don't collect any money. We, we have the benefit of having it at Homewood High School, which we appreciate very much, but we don't do it as a fundraiser. In fact, it's really a fun loser. We put in money. We don't ask for any contributions. We do get some, but it's usually not enough to cover the costs because we feel like educating people about the city's assets, some of the creatures that we have, the salamanders, is an important thing. We have something really important here in Homewood. We have a hillside that has spotted salamanders, Webster salamanders, two-lined salamanders. I think we have like eight or nine different kinds of salamanders there. And we just want the public, we want our residents to know this because we think we have a very special community here in Homewood. And so that's why we put on the festival and we've been busy with the festival. We just learned about this development over the weekend. I saw the pictures for the first time yesterday, yesterday afternoon. So I'm sorry, I don't know all the ins and outs of, of the, of the development, but I'm going to speak for the salamanders because we, we heard a lot about Sanford and a lot about the community, but nobody talked about the salamanders tonight. So I had these last night and you may not realize that the hillside, you probably have heard that the hillside has salamanders, but what you don't realize is what they need to live in our community. They need the old-growth forest, which we have, and we are very much appreciative of the city helping us have that 32 acres, 33 acres of woodland, old-growth forest. But the other thing they need is they need to be able to cross to a vernal pool. A vernal pool is a pool that dries up in the summer. And the reason that's important is if they laid eggs in a pond or a river or a stream, it would have fish and the fish would eat the babies and we'd never have salamanders. They would be, they'd be eaten up. So a vernal pool is very important. It has been there probably centuries and we're just trying to save it. We've been, Friends of Shades Creek has been a group since 1998, so, and we've had a salamander festival for, or some kind of a festival, but we've called it recently the Salamander Festival for 26 years. So I hope you'll join us next year. But anyway, these pictures show the egg masses. The females, well, actually, the males cross to the vernal pools first, just like males like to do. They want to be first sometimes and then the females come and they mate in a vernal pool. And this is what the egg masses look like when they're in the pool. Here's another picture. I'm sorry, we don't have a fancy, I, I will get you a fancy production that you can look at better. This is all I have tonight. I just didn't have time. So I'm doing the best I can. I appreciate you listening. And so this is what they look like inside, they're, as they're growing in that egg mass. And after several weeks, they look like this, kind of like a tadpole. They have gills, like a tadpole. And then eventually, depending on weather conditions, warming, whatever, they will lose those gills and they'll become a full-fledged salamander. This is a handful of them, what they look like when they're, when they're babies. And then they will return to the old-growth forest where they will live underground in burrows, under rocks, under logs for the rest of their life, which could be 30 years, sometimes 40 years. Some of the biologists think they may be 40 years. This is, this is one on the side of the road that we have. And we've been getting more and more people coming to Homewood just to watch this migration that takes place after it's been cold. We usually get a warming spell in January and that's when they run, is what we call when they run. I know I'm leaving some of the story out, but that's, that's the basic story about, about the salamanders and the importance of the vernal pools. We do have a vernal pool on the side of the forest preserve, which they have been using, but lately they have been using more of the pools on the opposite side of South Lake Shore, which is Creekside East. And if Creekside East becomes a development that has been shown to you tonight, they probably won't exist. At least they will not be a population that will be reproducing. They'll just eventually go away, just like event, or in the beginning, we had salamanders all along South Lake Shore. And then with development, we lost, we've lost most of that population. So we're trying to hold on to this population. We think it's important for students, for biology, for, for residents to know that we have this. And it's been bringing in a lot of people. We have a film crew that has been filming the recent migration because they want to be able to show that to people. And so we think that's important for our city. So I just wanted, wanted to speak for the salamanders, first of all. And also I want to speak a little bit about the water quality issues that could present problems with the development on Creekside East. And I'm going to let some of our other members speak to you more about some of these other issues. I mainly wanted you to see, hear the history of the salamanders and the migration that we have here that I don't know of any other place in the Birmingham area that has this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Campworth and a resident of Woodridge Place in Vestavia Hills. I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly. I'd like to just quickly reiterate the sound and the lighting issue. I'm one of the seven or eight residents whose property is contiguous to the current soccer field or, or field and track property. And to the gentleman's point earlier, we experienced the lights shining in our bedroom, the sound of the football field, which is great on a Saturday afternoon when you can hear the tackle and then the number of the player making the tackle. But Saturday morning, hearing some athlete jam out to Black Sabbath at the track and field at 7:30 is not a welcome sound. So I'm part of the Woodridge community. We have 63 residences within a, a mile strip, but there's also homes up and along Shades Crest that will also be impacted by this property and this plan. I would say too, we are all residents of Vestavia, so we don't have a voice on this council, but I would hope that you'd reach out to your brothers at the city of Vestavia for impact and, and input as well, how this may affect their taxpayers and voters as well. The last point I want to make is I watched the rebirth of Brookwood Mall when they added the residential and shopping 15, 18 years ago, whenever that happened. It was a very exciting time. Looking at some of the renditions tonight, I can't help but look back and say, it looks very similar to those years versus what Brookwood Mall looks like today. And I don't think, none of us want to look forward 15 years at empty stores, empty restaurants, and a closed property that's of limited current use. So that's all I have to say this evening. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Laura Williams. I live on Lucerne Boulevard in Lake Shore Estates. I did not come here dressed or prepared to speak, but I want to say that I heard about this yesterday and we, I feel like we pay pretty close attention, right there off of Lake Shore Drive. If we lived in the city of Sanford, I would think this is the most delightful thing I've ever seen. I am shocked by how little reference has been made to Homewood High School. My children are long out of Homewood High School, but this seems to be preparing to bring a whole lot of traffic, foot traffic otherwise, into Homewood High School's proximity and I am just shocked to hear a presentation like this that does not acknowledge Homewood High School. As Ms. Sanders noted earlier, Homewood is eight square miles. You have to live in Homewood to attend Homewood High School. You do not have to live in Homewood to attend Sanford. I love Sanford. And again, if we lived in the city of Sanford, I would think this is delightful. But we live in the city of Homewood with one high school and I'm just shocked at how little reference has been made to the impact on Homewood High School. And that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sri Malampati. I live in Woodstone Woodplace up above the hill with my neighbors, Steve and Tom that came in here. I think I echo their remarks on the sound and noise pollution. We enjoy the, right now we have the luxury to enjoy the view, enjoy the serenity of the chirping of the birds and the football on Fridays and the, and the, and the Navy or the SEALs team practicing their, their screams in the morning Saturday. These are all great, but bringing so much noise and sound pollution there down, I don't know how much it's going to be helpful, but it's going to echo a lot with the noise, the way that the hill construction is over there, just the way the example of how Tom was saying, you know, you could hear the play-by-play from football. Now just imagine that amplified with loud music and whatever is going to happen there, it's going to be so much noise pollution there. That's one of the remarks. The second one I want to make is the traffic that's on Lake Shore. Y'all are aware that during peak time, evening, 5 o'clock, 4 o'clock, the amount of traffic that comes on Shades Crest Road, which is up on the hill, which where we, we go to our neighborhood, not many people want to go on Lake Shore because it's so much backed up already. And so they come onto Lake Shore, I mean, onto Shades Crest Road, and that street is backed up all the way from Columbiana to midway up Shades Crest already. And now imagine you had this property or all this population staying there, that they have to come onto Lake Shore. It's just going to deviate that traffic towards more onto Shades Crest Road and it's going to cause more nuisance there. So I think we're going to address this with the city of Vestavia and the Vestavia council too about that, but we would appreciate us not being part of Homewood, but still hearing us and our, our comments and all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot, they called Steve, he's like, we don't want to see another Brookwood Mall place down there. It hurts every time we pass by the Brookwood Mall that all the buildings are left empty. I think Steve made a great point about that. Yeah, we don't want to see a second one like that 15 years from now.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Rakesh Varma. I live, again, the Woodridge neighborhood, 1533. You know, I moved to that place seven years, seven years ago with my kids and I still go to Lake Shore Drive, Lake Shore Park. We love the place, you know, we are building memories. But I saw this great presentation, very fancy, but, you know, that just looks like a concrete jungle to me. I lived in big cities and, you know, I don't want my kids to have the memories of a concrete jungle. I want them to feel nature, to be connected to nature. And the other thing I feel as a kid, when I grew up, we were into sports, but any time we had some open space, it was always used for commercial purpose and we lost overgrounds. We never got to play. I just feel this is going to happen again and I wish, you know, the, the images look so fancy, but I wish they would have showed the pictures what it looks right now. It's breathtaking. People come, they love it. You feel so much nature. You love so much memory. So I wish and I urge the council to think about it, not for me, I've, you know, we have grown up, but for kids, for people to enjoy and, you know, just being a part of Birmingham, that's what Birmingham is. It's not Dallas or it's not New York where we lived, you know. It's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hannah Wolfson. I'm a resident of Homewood. I live on 310 Crest Drive. I wanted to make sure, I also did not come prepared and I apologize for that, but I wanted to make sure that you all heard from Homewood residents as well as concerned residents from the surrounding area. I wanted to add on to what was mentioned before about traffic and other concerns related to the high school. My eldest child graduated from the high school last year, so it is very fresh in our minds, the difficulty of both parents delivering children to the high school and young inexperienced drivers traveling on Lake Shore and on the Montague Alley during those peak times. And I have another child that's coming up into the high school in a few years when I think we're expecting larger enrollment, so even high school enrollment will increase pressure on that traffic and as well as the parking, excuse me. And I think this is a really interesting project and I think there's probably a lot of benefit. Hi, my name's Hannah Wolfson. I'm a resident of Homewood. I live on three-ten Crest Drive. I wanted to make sure, I also did not come prepared, and I apologize for that, but I wanted to make sure that you all heard from Homewood residents as well as concerned residents from the surrounding area. I wanted to add on to what was mentioned before about traffic and other concerns related to the high school. My eldest child graduated from the high school last year, so it is very fresh in our minds, the difficulty of both parents delivering children to the high school and young inexperienced drivers traveling on Lake Shore and on the Montague Alley during those peak times. And I have another child that's coming up into the high school in a few years, when I think we're expecting larger enrollment, so even high school enrollment will increase pressure on that traffic and as well as the parking, excuse me. And I think this is a really interesting project, and I think there's probably a lot of benefit to the community for it, but I think you've heard a theme here that they're valuing or emphasizing community involvement, but the community is actually taken by surprise by this. As far as we're aware, there's been one open meeting to explain the project that was held yesterday, a very short notice. I don't know if there was any public notice besides the announcement over the weekend. If there was, it was not adequate because most of the community was sort of taken by surprise by this. The website that they have referred to is sorely lacking in information about the plan. The only maps are the maps that were shown here today, which while they show the site plan, don't show planned entrances and exits, especially not on Armory Road, which is currently used for high school carpool traffic. So it's impossible to see from the presentation that was given today what impact that would be. I understand that you all may have seen traffic reports, but I don't believe those have been shared publicly. I just feel like this maybe needs more time and more answers to questions. We'd like to take them at their word in saying that the hope is to take a next step so that they can engage the community, but they also say that there has been extensive community engagement and it feels like there hasn't, which raises the question of, you know, why push to get the zoning fixed before there is a firmer site plan and understanding of the general impact, both on the watershed, on the environment, on the high school, on the traffic, and what it could mean for the thousand or so high school students who will be studying adjacent to a large urban-style development? What it will mean to the development if the high school students all decide to appear at 3:00 PM and suddenly they're not so happy about having a bunch of rowdy teenagers exploring and engaging in this warm, open community and restrictions begin to go up? Or if the band does in fact decide to show up and play and suddenly the, all four hundred of the band students are not welcome on that small platform? So I just think it raises more questions than they have shared answers or maybe have answers for, and we'd like a little bit more time as a community to discuss it and understand it further. Thanks so much.
My name is Paul Freeman. I live at twenty-four seventy-one Huntington Glen Drive in Homewood. I'm about four or five miles downstream of this proposed development. I live adjacent to, my home is directly on Shades Creek. I wade in the stream, I fish in the stream, I canoe and kayak, I pick up litter in the stream. It's very important to me, and I see the water when it's clean and clear and running. I see it when it's full of sediment and dirt that run from construction sites. I see it when it's floods. I don't worry about the flooding so much because I haven't built any infrastructure in the floodplain adjacent to my home. I have trees, I have woodlands, and I'm okay with that being intermittently flooded and the water recedes. I don't have much invested in that except my appreciation for the trees that hold that land and hold that property together. I want to say my son is a recent graduate of Homewood High School, benefited from the baseball field that is in, I guess what they're calling Creekside East, that area. So I have a lot of appreciation for recreation and utilization of this property already. Keep my comments sort of focused to, I guess it's case five on tonight's agenda, the FD twenty-five oh-three dash oh-five. I heard from the developers, a lot of opportunity and a lot of their insistence that there's going to be collaboration and cooperation, and that's very much appreciated on how these, this plan is going to come together. I heard that this is kind of, tonight is kind of a starting point for them. I'm concerned that case number five is the final development plan for Creekside East. It sounds to me that, it appears to me that it is closer to final than it is to the starting point, and I just wanted to bring that up. One of the things, when I look at the development plan, which is on page fifty-one of your big thick packet that's on the website, it's the, I guess it's labeled as C one-point-oh-dash-E. It has sort of an engineering layout of putting the track and field and the soccer fields on this, the property, that's currently kind of known as the intermeal field area. I'm concerned, I shouldn't mention, I've got a degree in environmental science and did my master's thesis more than twenty-five years ago on the effect of land use change and the impacts on streams and biodiversity and water quality. That is probably not, it's okay, it's great. C one-point-oh-point-E, I believe it is, shows that the soccer field and the track specifically as it's placed, really encroaches on the floodway and the floodplain. Probably fifty percent of the track and field as it was drawn inundates and encroaches in on the floodway, and my statement is just, it's very bad practice for Homewood or any cities to be permitting and approving the development of infrastructure and the filling of the floodway and the floodplain. As it's drawn, it shows this, what will be, of course, a very flat field and track will have to be, there'll have to be fill, dredge and fill of the floodplain and the floodway to hit that six-hundred-and-thirty-two-foot mark that is illustrated on the plans. So I just wanted to basically make a statement that the salamander habitat is very important, but also taking into consideration that there is, you're setting a precedent to prove this development plan that is as illustrated is having a pretty significant impact on the floodplain. Shades Creek already floods, we know about that, we know about the flooding on the apartments and the property downstream. We know that a lot of that water comes from Irondale and Mountain Brook and Homewood, and it continues. And it's based on poor practices and poor decisions that have happened in the past where we've increased impervious surface and build development and encroached on the floodplain in other places. Just thank you very much for your time and commitment.
Hey, I'll sign in a minute. I'm Lyndon Abers, Paul's taking my sheet. But I live at seventeen forty-five Murray Hill Road. Just a few things, I know everybody said it, I'm going to say it one more time, just in case your ears were stopped up. They've talked a lot about community engagement, there has been none. Okay, maybe Sanford has talked with them, but the community has not. We only heard about this over the weekend. Yes, I heard about it yesterday, that there was a community meeting. So that says to me that, are they really interested in engaging with the community? Not, not so sure. I've lived in Homewood my entire sixty-plus years. I have, you know, seen the development of the whole area through there, through the years. You know, we've watched parts of them deal with, parts of Homewood High School trying to sink and trying to fortify and all of that. I think they've finally got that solved, I hope. But the, I think Paul makes an excellent point just now, that if they move these soccer fields over to where they are now, I have in the last fifteen years, probably at least five times, seen that entire area up to South Lake Shore underwater. And you all have, we have all seen water over Lake Shore Drive in that area. And so how far are they going to have to build that up to protect their infrastructure? So I think that's problematic. I loved their beautiful pictures, but I will say that I saw a lot of hardscape. There was, some mentioned somewhere in some of the stuff that came out, that there was going to be a big green space, dedicated green space. Didn't see any of that in any of those renderings. Saw a lot of hardscape, saw a lot of hard buildings. I agree with the first man who was up here. A fifteen-story building, really? Seriously? No. I mean, please. That is just ridiculous. And I also would like to say, I would, if they can come up with great watershed management, something new, something wonderful, and they can present it to us and we think it'll work, I say, more power to them. That would be fabulous, but I think that needs to be developed before we move forward. And is there really a reason that we have to get this zoning already, you know, changed at this point in time? I agree, I think we need to investigate further, there needs to be more community engagement that they obviously would like to do at this point. They have talked a lot about it being, you know, a walkable pedestrian traffic area and that people are going to come from their neighborhoods. They're going to walk to this place, there won't be a lot of cars because they're going to walk to it from their neighborhood. So I'm asking you, think about the neighborhoods around there, what, who's going to walk from their neighborhood over there, other than Sanford students? I don't think so. I mean, you're going to have to walk a couple of miles or more to get there, and I just don't think that's going to happen. I think you're going to have a lot more traffic than you think, than you think you are. And it really concerns me, all the hardscape that's there. I love the salamanders, I would like to keep the bernal pools, but I am very concerned about the stormwater drain runoff. We already have issues in Homewood with stormwater runoff, so I think there are many things for you guys to think about, for all of us to think about, and it would behoove us to back off for a little bit, postpone, and look at those and talk and come up with some more definitive plans. Thank you very much.
My name is Brian Luciano. I live at ninety-three Lucerne Boulevard. I've been a Homewood resident since nineteen ninety and the city councilman during the nineties, so I'm very familiar with what the process is and what's going on. I lived in Ward One when I was on city council. Just a couple of things I want to bring to everybody's attention, and I know, I don't know how long you all have been members of the council, but I go back to nineteen ninety, and I just want to say some, that there has been a lot of controversy with things involving Sanford University over the years. If you go back and look at some of the records and things, you'll see that property would exchange, not exchange, who buys this, who buys that, what's happening and how you're going forward. So there's been a lot of issues involved with the city of Homewood and Sanford proper, and Sanford itself. So one thing I'll point out is, built over time, potential changes as we go forward, what kind of changes are we talking about built over time? You know, are they going to come back again in another two years when they've only built so much of it and they're going to ask for another bridge over the, over the area down by the, down by the football field, the fields? Or they're going to put a bridge over here? They still haven't gotten permission from the county, or, well, this would be the state to have permission to go over this, to go over the, over the, over Lake Shore Boulevard. So what I'm saying is, is, you know, how many different times will they have to come back to the council and ask questions and say, hey, look, guys, you know, we might, we need other changes, we need other things going on? As far, it's a great plan, I like what they did and everything else, but I will say this, I've been involved in the city of Homewood a lot of different things over the years, and this is the first time I heard about this yesterday. And I think there's a lot of people out here that feel the same way, and for you to turn around and make an approval to the council, I know what happens with the council, a lot of people in the council just say, oh, it went through the BZA, we'll approve it and away they go. And I know it's going to have to have maybe a public hearing going forward, and I think you'll get a lot of people coming out about the public hearing for it. But I just want, I thank you for your time, and I really thank you for your service because I know it's not a very good job being up there, doing what you've got to do. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Jason Malone. I'm at five-oh-four Lake Shore Drive, so across the street from the development that's getting discussed. And yeah, a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, so I don't want to take up anybody's, anybody's time that they've already spent here. But I respect everybody's, you know, work that they put into this, you guys, Sanford, the developers, everybody's, you know, got a sunk cost of time and money in this, and you know, that's important. But at this time, I think it's just time to hit the pause button and ask for a continuation. A lot's been learned, a lot's been brought up in these plans that I think are really good in theory, but some of the solutions are either hopeful or conjecture. And it sort of seems the rezoning is a little bit of ready-fire aim, and I think from my standpoint, I'd really like to hear from some of the stakeholders like the education system, the high school, the infrastructure, to hear not only that this is going to be a place for a new hotel and a new cup of coffee, but what's it really going to fix? Jennifer, you brought up, we're landlocked, so we have issues. All these people have issues that need addressing. Is this going to help those issues? Is it going to make it better? And I don't think we've heard that yet. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Melanie McBrayer. I live at fifteen-eleven Oxmore Road. So full transparency, I taught at Homewood High School, taught environmental science and AP environmental science. I currently am working there in a part-time capacity. I have my master's in environmental management from Sanford University, so I have all the concerns that everyone else had up here, even the point that Ms. Sanders made about Homewood is only eight-point-three square miles, so what land we do have that's natural to be able to shed water, as part of the watershed itself, is extremely important. But I want to make the point from a teacher's perspective of being at the high school, it isn't a great location. I was so worried, and we were talking about building a new high school and leaving that spot, because the Homewood Forest Preserve is a ten-minute walk, the creek is right there. So my concern would be if I were currently teaching, and we have teachers currently that do the same things that I did in my classroom, which was to go out to the Homewood Forest Preserve multiple times during the year, down to the creek multiple times in the year. So any kind of traffic increase, especially on Armory Road or South Lake Shore, would be very concerning trying to make that walk out to use the Homewood Forest Preserve or even down to the creek. Under current, and we made, a couple of people made the point about the current traffic flow on Armory Road, even during the day when it's not necessarily the beginning of the school or school letting out, it's constant traffic, it's just people going in and out. So if Sanford moves their track facility there, their soccer field facility there, that would even increase even more of the traffic flow through there. There's not, there's not space to put a sidewalk. If you did that, then you're taking out even more wetland or bernal pools which run along, you know, right beside that road, so that's not really a solution to make that a more safe, you know, transport for the forest preserve in that area. So I just wanted to share that, from that perspective of it being a concern for the high school, at least from that educational opportunity to still be able to access the preserve in the, in the wetland area. This is a hard decision, enough for you guys, but we appreciate you listening to all of our concerns. And again, this is, like everyone else, we found out over the weekend, so this has been kind of scramble and show up and try to make the best case for why we, we would be opposed to, you know, allowing this project to continue right there. But thank you.
Ms. McBrayer, would you sign? Did you sign your?
I did.
Okay, thank you then.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy Love, sixteen twenty-six, Twenty-seventh Avenue South. First, I want to thank the planning commission for all you all's efforts and giving us the opportunity to speak and voice our concerns. Also, I want to thank Landmark Development and Sanford University for hosting last night's community listening session. I learnt a lot. I think we all learnt a lot. We was able to really get our answers question, our questions answered and our concerns heard. As far as this development, I recommend that the commission vote approval for it, for the council recommended to the council to approve. This is good for Homewood. I've spoken to, in front of the commission before, recently, in regards to the Brookwood development. This is what I was talking about. This is what Homewood's need, needs to grow. Homewood is a, is a body with a lot good, with a lot of good parts in it. And as we know, any body needs things to grow. Homewood is gonna grow regardless. We're growing. Everyone wants to be here. We love Homewood. This is what we need to continue to grow in a healthy manner, right? I think the developers have done a great job in addressing everyone's concern and letting everyone know that, hey, this is just the beginning. This is just the beginning to further discussion and further work to, for us as a community to come together, engage one another and continue to grow. Communication is a two-way street. You have to seek information. You have to be willing to listen and learn. I think that's what everyone, particularly the development and Sanford University has done. And I believe, in, in my opinion, that's what they will continue to do. Cause I, I look forward to continuing to work with them, with you all and with residents to see this project work for everyone. Like I said, this is good for the environment. This is good for the economy. It's for its tax revenue, job creation. This is good for residents. And ultimately, this is good for the future of Homewood. As far as Brookwood, I heard a lot of people mention that. The reason why, in my opinion, Brookwood is in the condition that it's in right now, it's, it's because it doesn't have these components that the developers mentioned tonight. It doesn't have the recreational, the educational, the, uh, the, uh, the component regarding housing, development, the mixed use, the engagement. If it would had that fifteen, twenty years ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation today as far as Brookwood being empty. And I, and again, I know that's another case. I continue, I'm looking forward to working with them in the same manner to see something that can benefit the community as a whole. So again, I ask you to vote an approval for this case. And I thank you again, and everyone, everyone, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I wasn't gonna speak, but can't let it end on that. I didn't know about this either. Only saw the signs in about the eight Bonita, which told me about the meeting, so that's why I'm here.
May I get you to identify yourself?
My name is Chris Naylor. I live in Hollywood. I've lived, attended Homewood High School, grew up here, class of eighty-six, lived in Hollywood for about twenty years. I've seen what, the growth of Sanford and how it's overtaken Salter Road and other neighborhoods. And I know Jennifer talked about Homewood being, you know, the neighborhood being more landlocked. But so is Sanford. And I think they need to stay where they are and they don't need to grow any further and utilize the land that they have. Because I, I think it's just tearing up our neighborhoods. That they're just growing into Salter Road. They're gonna start growing in there and affecting other neighbors. So I just wanna say hit the pause button as well. Think about it. I mean, you guys are our last line of defense for the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sign this in a second. Melinda Williams. Melinda Williams, lived two thirty-four Raymond Drive, have been there for almost fifty years now. Actually, not on that road, but in Homewood, lived two different locations. And I, I want to reiterate that had I not been looking for something on an agenda on the city's website on Friday for something completely different, I would not have ever known that this was happening tonight with the Sanford cases. And I feel like there are an awful lot of people in that same boat. There were people who posted on social media that they were unaware of this. And all of a sudden, like on Friday, I think people started seeing things pop up. And that's not really an adequate amount of time for the neighbors to, or the community members to say, we have, you know, we have concerns and here's what they are. Or maybe we don't have concerns after we learn more about it. But I think it's inappropriate for, for that to kind of have been dropped on us all, you know, less than four days ago, five days ago. I made a list of about eighteen questions, most of which have been already covered. So I'm not gonna go through them again, but I do have a few specific things I'd like to ask. And Landmark made a comment that they really wanted to have a community partnership. And I think that's great. However, a lot of us who've been here for a long time have seen the kind of lack of partnership that Sanford has had with a lot of our neighbors off of Salter, Windsor and so on, allowing a lot of the properties that they purchased to decline significantly and affected, affected a lot of property owners, their property values. So there needs to be a better effort at community partnership than there has been. And I haven't seen a whole lot of examples of that happening. So that's a concern that I have. And I think several people that I've spoken with have the same concerns. The traffic study that was mentioned, just a really rough estimate. It looks to me like there's, with four hundred and thirty-five residential units and a hundred and fifty hotel rooms, that's an additional six hundred vehicles potentially right there. Then you add to that the number of people who work in the hotel, work in the, the retail establishments that are, you know, part of the plan. And you're probably conservatively looking at it, a minimum of another hundred. So did that, did that traffic study accommodate an additional seven hundred, let's say, vehicles going in and out on a routine basis? That's a lot. Another question I have has to do with the hotel. And it's, you know, it's twelve to fifteen stories, whatever, if you take ten feet per, per store, per, uh, per store, per floor and a hundred and fifty feet, then that's about fifteen stories. Is there going to be a request for a lodging tax abatement, such as the ten million dollar tax incentive given to the Valley Hotel, which represented seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the lodging tax to be paid over twenty years? I didn't see that anywhere in the, in the plan as to whether that would be requested. There was discussion in their proposal that there would be shared sports, shared sports facilities, I assume to be shared with high school. And if that's the case, who's gonna be in charge of that? And what's the priority, what, what will be the priori, prioritization rules on, on use of that? You know, if, if Sanford is gonna put it in, then I'm guessing Sanford's gonna have first right of refusal on the facilities or on the individual, the track and the field or the soccer field or whatever. Let's see. So the other, other quick things we talked about, is it gonna be in a floodplain? What kind of impact is it gonna have on stormwater management? And how's it gonna affect the sanitary sewer system, which is already overburdened in, in Homewood as we know? What is the anticipated effect on the Homewood school system? If you have four hundred and thirty-five residences, you're gonna have children of those people moving in. So how's that gonna impact the school system? Also, there's already a shortage of parking at the high school. Does the plan make any accommodation, accommodation for high school to increase their parking areas? Cause it looks to me like the entire development completely envelops the high school and the high school has no place to, to grow or expand in terms of other facilities or parking. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Herr. I live at one twenty-one Windsor Drive. It's my understanding that the question before this, this body tonight is whether or not to rezone this property. I have a couple of questions related to rezoning. If you vote to approve this rezoning, how much oversight does Homewood then have over what is developed there? How high it is and the types of businesses that go in there? That would be my first question. My second question is, is there any sort of deterrent to doing what so many have asked tonight? And that is postponing the vote until we have more time to study this. The other thing is, that has not even been mentioned because we've really only heard about the concept tonight. And it's a beautiful concept. It, it just looks gorgeous. But all of the other issues that surrounds that are of concern, such as all of the hard surface and the stormwater and that sort of thing. So I'm not gonna draw on that. But the other thing is, in the development of this area, has anyone thought about the construction traffic and the school using the same roads every day for construction? If this is approved, I would ask that there be some sort of consideration given to having Sanford create their own access into these two areas and not impact the high school. So my first request is to postpone this until we have something beyond a concept, a little more concrete information, and to hear from the city school system. I understand they're doing a study right now about which schools can handle more students and which schools are at capacity. We all know that not only is Homewood landlocked, but the high school is landlocked as well. And Homewood continues to grow. People are having larger families. The older people are moving out and younger people are moving in. So we have to look beyond just the first five years and consider what will be happening in ten years, what will be happening in fifteen years. We need to have a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, a fifteen-year plan, and look beyond our own likes and dislikes about the development and consider those that will follow behind us. Thank you.
Jeremy Love, again, I just wanna put forth a quick idea. I hear what everyone is saying in regards to growth and development, preservation and improvement and continued communication. My idea, proposal and recommendation to the developer and/or the commission or anyone is just to continue to host community listen sessions, work sessions, monthly, bi-weekly, what have you, so that we can continue this conversation as the project moves forward. But the only way we can get to that point is, is that, in my opinion, we approve tonight and move forward with the conversation and with the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we're gonna close the public portion of the hearing and, and call the applicant, Mr. Dunn, come back up. Mr. Dunn, I know there, like I, I wrote down seventeen different names of people who came up, many of whom had kind of the same sentiment, that asked a lot of the same questions. I know you're probably prepared to answer, answer those questions, at least to the best of your ability at this point. I guess one question I have for you, are you gonna be here next month for the Bulldog development? Is that you or is that?
I will be here, yes.
You'll be here, okay. And I'm speaking for myself and not anyone else on the commission, but in, in light of some of the concerns, really more about the lack of, I think, the perceived lack of notice. I know the city did the proper noticing and et cetera. I, I just, and we, we can talk more and you can address all these issues tonight. I just think that it probably makes sense for you to think about maybe coming back next month where you could have more concrete answers for some of these issues. Again, understanding that, that you have every desire and you've expressed that to work with the community collaboratively to try to figure this out. I, I just wanted to throw that out as a possibility, as opposed to voting on it tonight, maybe representing. Or we've closed the public portion, but come back next month and have maybe more answers for some of the questions.
I agree with that.
But, you know, you're, you're here, if you, if we have questions tonight or if you, there's anything that you want to address that's been said tonight, certainly feel free to do so. I just, I, I think that, I, I think that a little more time for this to bake. I think a lot of us up here, at least I am enthusiastic about a lot of aspects about this. I think, I, I think there's some value in, in maybe hitting the pause button. But I can't force you to do that. If you want us to vote, we can vote, so.
Well, I, I think there's several points that, that we should consider. And let me start with sort of the procedural end of, of how we've looked at the project. There's different ways to approach something like this. As I said at the start of our presentation, we, we could have taken a very different approach to this. We, we could have worked within the existing zoning. We could have come to you with a, a building, in a building, in a building, in a building over a, a period of time and chosen not to approach this in a, in a more comprehensive way. To the best of our ability, we've, we've tried to establish a framework of a plan that can begin a process. And, and we've done that, I, I believe, in a level of detail in our application to the city that the city's not seen before, in, in terms of this, this type of land use filing. So we've done everything that we can do at this point to put thought, idea, information, analysis together to set a framework for what this development can be. But we have to have something in, in the context to begin to address all the questions that we've heard here tonight. I, I think if nothing else, hopefully you've seen through the presentation that I, I think we anticipated every issue that I heard public comment on tonight. And in order to begin to move this in a, you know, in a thoughtful, in a productive manner, we, we have to have a framework to work from to come up with good solutions to the types of issues that we talked about tonight. I, I think we understand and we know where the concern is and frankly, we share those concerns. I mean, there, there is nothing from within this development plan or among the stakeholders that have brought this to you that, that we don't want to be able to find good solutions to these ideas. But we could have approached it very differently. We, we could have approached it in a very incremental manner and come to you one building at a time. Because the property is zoned. Because the property is zoned today to address many of the programmatic uses that we've proposed. But we chose not to do it that way, knowing full well that we were gonna enter into a public process where we were gonna get good input from within the community. And I respect that certain people will say, "Well, I just heard about this yesterday." There has to be a starting point of a process like this, and we are at that starting point. Right? We could've come to you and said, "Look, the property is zoned, the way it is zoned today, and we'd like to develop a project here." We could spend months, you know, working around in circles without something to work with. And so that's our ask of you tonight, is give us something to begin to engage with the community to address very specifically the types of issues that we heard about here tonight. We've done a great amount of work to be prepared to start this process, and that's really all we're asking for, is give us the chance to start this process. Whether we wait a week, a month, or a year, what we've got to do is start the process with something that we can work from. And this is not the last stop on this journey. I mean, this process will continue on for an extended period of time. The rights that you have, nothing can be done here without the city's concurrence and approval. I mean, ultimately, there will be development agreements written that will speak to, I think, every issue that we've heard here tonight, whether it's how we address stormwater, or how we address traffic, or how does this project generate new tax base for the city? How does this project work in harmony with the high school? All of those things, ultimately, will find their way into a development agreement. But again, until we have something tangible to work from, then we're really not beginning a process of public engagement. And so that's our ask. I'm happy to address any question that you'd like to ask, but until we have something to start with and the ability to continue what we've been doing, and yes, last night was the first time that we opened the doors to have an open public dialogue, but we've had many meetings with many groups within the community that have expressed the types of concerns that we heard here tonight, and we're ready to address that. But again, I would just ask, we've got to have something to start with. If we're gonna look at stormwater, we have to know what's the scale of development that we're dealing with. If we're gonna talk about height and impacts that people have with height, if we're gonna talk about noise, traffic, pick any issue that we heard here tonight. We've got to have something on the table that we can work from, and that's what your approval will give us.
Mr. Chairman, I came here tonight a big fan of the proposal. I think it looks great. I support what Jeremy said. I think it's something that, I love the idea of Sanford students walking across the pedestrian bridge to go to the development. I think it's great. After tonight and after hearing from the people that we represent, that we are here charged with representing, I can't vote tonight for this. I can't. Again, I've had several meetings. I like it. I like the plan. I think you're there. I think you just need a little bit more time and engagement. I don't think it's, you know, an infinite amount of time. I think a month from now, I'm ready to be here again, but I think you're almost there. But I do think thirty days from now is gonna make a difference in those conversations. I think these folks here want to talk to you. I hear them say that there are aspects of this project that they like and they support. So I just think a few more conversations are warranted.
My name is Colin Coyne. My Homewood address is eight hundred Lake Shore Drive. My work address is, my home address is twenty-six fifty-five Alta Vista Drive in Bestavia Hills. And it's become a bit awkward that Sanford has not spoken to you directly, nor to the folks in the audience. And so I felt I should stand up here and at least acknowledge a couple of key points. Number one, most everything everybody said here was correct, including the fact that Sanford historically has not been the best neighbor. That's a fair and valid criticism of Sanford University. But I do know that in the last three years, there have been some significant shifts. And we are very sincere in our outreach and wanting to be Homewood's university, and wanting to be a part of this community and actively engaged. And there's not a person here that I won't sit here and speak with until the end of the evening, or tomorrow, or any day. My own background, as many of you know, I taught in the environmental management program at Sanford, did it for nine years in the master's program, LEED AP, developed the first LEED certified shopping center, the world's first LEED McDonald's. I think the environmental concerns are legitimate. And one thing I do know is if we do get the chance to sit and talk, which is what I hear people asking for, is the chance to really sit and talk. Coach Landris, you said you're a big fan of it, but I think you've had the advantage, and that's what is being highlighted here. You understand more of what we're talking about than we were able to put into forty-five minutes. You understand the conversations that have taken place with the high school and that type of thing. And so I felt it was unfair to leave Bob up here representing Sanford without Sanford putting its name on it, because we are, this is our community. We are the neighbors. And I am convinced that we can come to the answers that people seek. If we do not come up with something that sets the standard for watershed management, that becomes the gold standard for everything in the waterway, all the way up and down Shades Creek, then we will have failed as an academic institution, let alone our Christ-centered mission, which very much believes we should be stewards of the resources God's given us. So I'm committing to anyone here, we will sit with y'all as long as it takes, we'll work with you on anything about which you need to speak, and it's a privilege to do it, because we want to do it and we want to do it right. I understand the concerns. Again, folks are right. We do have to have an answer for traffic, and we have some good thoughts. We do have a, I think, some very forward-looking thoughts on how to do some of the engineered solutions. The fact is, if we do nothing, Shades Creek is already having an erosion problem in front of our campus. The Salamander issue is a concern. We've gotta find a way to take what we're inheriting from Brookwood and deal with it. So I do believe that those answers can be found. And the difference between perhaps prior administrations and today is Dr. Taylor and I think on a very light plane. And as the chief operating officer and chief financial officer of Sanford University, I do get to have a little influence in the environment and sustainability and the community is at the heart of what we do. That's what we want Sanford to be going forward. So if we're in a position right now where folks want us to have more conversations, that's exactly what we are pledging to do, because we still have to come to the council, we still have to come to everybody else and say, and get each of the projects approved. We still have to go through all that. But I also empathize with Bob's concern. If we can have some rough parameters so we know specifically what we're talking about, I think we can come up with better solutions. I leave that child to decide, that subtlety, and I'm perfectly comfortable. We are thrilled with whatever y'all decide. We've been around for a hundred and eighty-four years. We want to be around for another hundred and eighty-four right here at Lake Shore Drive. And we want to show that we are very committed to being that neighbor that everybody wants. And yes, some of those houses, we're in disrepair. We've moved them up, and we're continuing to move them up every single year. It's taken us too long, but we do hear you. We do hear our neighbors. So I apologize for taking a little time at the end of a long night, but it was just getting to the point where the fact that y'all had not heard from Sanford, from Sanford's leadership itself, we trust Bob, but we know Bob. Y'all don't. We want to come to know y'all and the folks sitting in this room. And I will personally meet with every single one of them, if that's what it takes, to make sure that we get that depth of understanding and show that we're not just talking empty words. We're trying to talk about something that really, really, really makes a sustainable difference for Homewood. In forty-five minutes, you can only say so much. We didn't talk about extensive conversations with the high school, or that it will help generate twenty-six million dollars of new school tax revenue to help them pay for these very concerns we're talking about. So that's the level of understanding that I think we need to get to for everybody in here to feel comfortable. And I'm quite convinced that, given the time, given the depth, we can be in a position to make everybody feel like this is something that makes sense, because at the end of the day, our academic mission, our faith mission, our commitment to the community, that's what Sanford's gonna stand for. Thank you.
Well said.
And I don't want you to take my comment a moment ago. I don't tell you what, I mean, obviously, this is your application. We vote if you want us to vote tonight. I just think what Landris is trying to convey is that there are concerns that the vote might not go the way you want it to tonight. We don't decide this issue ultimately. Ultimately, the city council will decide this issue, whether that's thirty days from now or approximately that or later. So all that, ultimately, it's up to you which way you want to proceed. And is there anything before, if you're not ready to answer that question or address that issue, is there anything from the public comment tonight that you want to share now that you feel like maybe needs to be addressed?
You know, not specifically. I think all the issues that we heard are good and fair issues. I don't think we heard anything tonight that we probably didn't anticipate, or we haven't had a good amount of dialogue on already, not necessarily with those individuals that spoke, but we'll cover that ground as we move forward. I thought Dr. Coyne spoke as directly to the subject of, you know, how we want to move this process forward as we can. Sanford's been here for generations. Sanford is going to be here for generations. I'm not sure you could ask for a better pillar in the community. I understand in the past, things may not have gone exactly as the community may have wanted, but I certainly think you heard an openness to do exactly what we're talking about doing here tonight, which is find new ways and good solutions to things that will impact the community for many years to come. And so that is our ask of you. You know, we have to follow your lead. I'm not gonna stand here and say, "We must have an answer tonight," and, you know, we'd like it to be an answer that obviously we're looking for. You know, I hope that we've demonstrated an interest in working with the city and with your staff, and frankly, taking your lead. The decision to approach this this way with the rezoning was not a decision we made on our own. We made that decision working with your staff and hearing the interests of the city and understanding what we believe to be the best way to move the project forward. So we have to leave it to you to determine what's the best course of action. I do believe what I said to be important, and the next step in order to really advance this in a meaningful way, which is, we do have to have something that we can work from. And as soon as you give that to us, then a lot of work can be done to begin to find good solutions that I think will address, or will speak to, all of the concerns that we heard here tonight. I can't promise you that we'll have a solution that everyone in this room will stand up and say, "Well, that's perfect." That's not realistic. But we certainly are prepared to engage in a way that hopefully will bring us closer together than some of the comments that you heard here tonight.
Well, it's up to the applicant. I can't...
If the applicant wants to request the continuance, that's your prerogative. If not, then the planning commission would vote on each one of the cases that's been advertised. So it's up to you to request that continuation if you or Sanford wants to do that. If not, the vote, they will take action on each one of those items.
If it helps in your decision, I also am not gonna be able to vote on this tonight, because we talk about good faith, we talk about wanting to participate with the community. As you noticed in the previous case that happened just before y'all's case, we take changing zoning very seriously, and we also take our constituents very seriously. And I think they deserve a little bit more time to ask all those questions that they want to ask of you. A little bit of good faith goes a long way in this town. And I think it'd be in your best interest to give these people a month to ask all those questions they want to, that everybody says they're so willing to address and respond to, instead of, you know, this and that, and, you know, the ultimatum, if I need an answer tonight to move forward. You really don't. I think you need to move forward to change some of these people's minds on what you're planning on doing, because those are, you know, their legitimate concerns. And, you know, that's how you're a good neighbor. So you can either become a good neighbor or continue the way these people feel about how Sanford's been in the past. It's up to you. But, I mean, I can't vote tonight. So, it's up to you.
And I'll add, I've got some questions, and this doesn't have to be answered tonight, it can be answered later, but I'd love a comment from the Board of Education. Homewood High School, I'd love to learn more about their feedback on this. Also have questions about, there are recommendations in that traffic study, want to make sure that those would happen moving forward. I'd love to have an understanding of what is potential tax revenue to the city. I'd love to learn a little bit more about Sanford affiliated residential personas. You know, one thing that could be a benefactor of Sanford could be anything, any kind of revenue that comes in. So I've got some questions. I'd love to learn a little bit more about that. And I think it's also, how tall will most of the buildings be? I know there's been some comments about a hotel being anywhere from ten, eleven stories to fifteen stories, who knows? So I think having some more answers, I think, would be beneficial.
I can...
Well, I wanted to clarify something. Mr. Respentos indicated he couldn't vote on this. Ultimately, if you want us to vote, we vote. I think what he's saying is he'd have trouble voting for it tonight. Maybe I can't speak for him. But under state law, I think if you want to proceed, we have to vote, so.
Sure.
You know, that's up to you. If you want to address any of the issues that have been raised, I know a lot of this has been discussed tonight, it's discussed in the plan, so I'll just kind of leave that up to you as to what you feel like you can do to address.
Well, sorry.
Again, the chairman indicated at the beginning of the meeting, the role of the planning commission in this case is advisory. Regardless of the way the planning commission votes, it will go to the city council for their consideration and final approval, so.
Right.
So...
Well, I think I can say with complete confidence, while I'm not a graduate of Sanford University and I was not a math major, I was a real estate major, but even as a real estate guy, I can do math pretty well, and I think it would suggest that let's take a pause. I'm confident I speak on behalf of my partner at Sanford University. Appreciate the feedback, the time. It's late, there's a storm blowing through town. Let's not continue this on any longer than we need to. Let's take the time that you've asked for, give us a chance to continue the process of opening the door and providing additional information and through various means, engaging with the community, and we'll look forward to being back in front of you in a month or so. And appreciate the time and the consideration and the commentary, and hopefully when we're back in front of you, we will be to a point where at least we can take a step toward putting the definition around this that ultimately will give us what we need to put solutions together to truly address the type of concerns that we heard this evening.
Okay, so the request is to carry over till next month, okay?
Great, thank you.
Just as a reminder, we have heard the case. We're gonna call him back next month. He's gonna answer any additional questions. The public portion of the hearing has been closed, so that part of this case is over.
So just to clarify, at your request, this consideration of these four cases are being continued to the planning commission's next meeting, which will be on Tuesday, April the first, at six o'clock in the East Chamber. So all of those citizens here in the audience are certainly invited to come back to that. Under normal procedures, we would not re-advertize it, so I'm advising you at this point that one month from tonight, on April the first, at six o'clock, these...